Okay, Mike, you are ready to go anytime you'd like.
Okay. We will, so it's the, today is January the 17th, is the GBOS regular meeting. I'll read a couple of statements and then we'll call it to order. So Girdwood Border Supervisors Committees and Subcommittee is subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Alaska Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Girdwood Border Supervisors operates under our Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. So I'll now call a meeting to order at 7:01. And just going to my copy of the agenda. Okay, so let's have a roll call. My name is Mike Edgington, I'm co-chair and land use supervisor. Brianna?
Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Thank you. Amanda?
Land Use Road Supervisor.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety.
Thank you, and I did see Guy.
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Thank you. Does anybody have any disclosures for tonight's meeting? Okay, not hearing any, I will hand it over, hand over the gavel, the virtual gavel to Brianna, because I have a disclosure.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, on item number five, I do IT work for, for Z Architects. And Marco is representing the petitioner in this case. I'm a contractor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I, in this case, would rule that that does not excuse you from voting in the agenda item. Anyone disagree with that ruling? On the board? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll go into Agenda revisions and approvals. We have in front of us tonight's agenda. Do I hear an approval or any amendments?
This is Brianna, I'd like to amend the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to include the Girdwood Trails Master Plan update under Old Business, if we could fit that in.
Okay, should we, just looking, there's quite a lot under there. We'll put that at the end of Old Businesses, 11 and a half or 11A?
Okay.
Okay, noted.
Okay, any other amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion, we should have done a motion first, I guess, but I'll entertain a motion for the amended agenda.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Guy, do I hear a second?
This is Brianna, I'll second.
Thank you very much, we'll do this by assent, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I heard five voices, any, any against? Okay, that passes by unanimously. Next, we move on to the minutes approval from the December the 20th regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept? Or a motion to approve?
I move to accept. This is Brianna.
Thank you, hear a second? Thank you, Amanda, again, we'll do it by voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, any against? Okay, well now move on to the December 20th LUC and GBOS joint meeting. Again, approval of the minutes, do I hear a motion?
Also move.
Thank you, Jennifer, and a second please.
Second is Brianna.
Thank you, Brianna, and again, voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any against? Okay, approved unanimously. We'll now go into some announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. GBOS Committees, Trails, Land Use, Public Safety and Cemetery have either held officer elections or will hold officer elections at their first meetings of 2022. We have the, an election for GBOS seat C, which will be on the ballot in April. The filings opened last Friday, I believe, and goes on to January 31st. We have a joint meeting with the municipality and the municipal manager, which is scheduled for January the 24th, next Monday at 4pm, that's via Teams. And the HLB 2022 Annual Work Programme and Five Year Management Plan is available at the link there on the page, I believe that's the updated version. I'm not actually entirely clear whether that's the updated version or the, it's yet to be updated. I don't know if Margaret or anybody else can clarify that for us.
I believe it's still yet to be updated.
Okay, so that's going to be discussed at the, sorry, Margaret, please go ahead.
We'll be posting the red line when it's ready.
Okay, thank you. And that's due to be discussed at the HLB Advisory Committee in March, the exact date of that meeting is not yet set. Okay, we move on to item number one. Under Introduction to Presentations in Report, so we have a presentation from Jen Schmidt, who is Assistant Professor of Natural Resource Management at UAA on wildfire hazard mappings. Are you on, Jen?
Yep, I'm here.
Welcome, welcome to, welcome to Girdwood virtually, and I look forward to the presentation, please go ahead.
If I can share my screen? Do I have that ability or no? It says only meeting organizers and presenters can share.
I can make it that, but we do have your presentation up right now, do you want to work off that?
I guess, yeah, whatever works for you. I can use this, so my name's Jen Schmidt. As mentioned, I work at the University of Alaska Anchorage Institute for Social and Economic Research. And I've had some help from Alex Fritz, she's an undergraduate student at UAA, and she's on, on with us here. And Zeke Zeal, he works at the University of Alaska Fairbanks and used to be the Fire Behavior Analyst for the State of Alaska. Next. And so I'm here to talk to you about wildfire hazard assessment. And so this, what I present is information on a hazard. And a hazard means a potential source of harm. So in the maps that I show you, there are no values or assets included, things like buildings or where people live. This is purely driven by hazardous fuels and vegetation. So in that picture there, say, the pipeline wouldn't be included, but what is captured is all that hedge, all that black spruce hazardous fuels that is burning. Next slide. And so what is a hazard? Well, the fuels are the hazard. Fuels are anything that can burn during a wildland fire, such as grass, shrubs, trees, dead leaves, needles. And so in the image there, on the right, you see crown, crown trees, so that would kind of represent when you would have crown fires. They throw a lot of embers, you know, very, very violent fires. And then ladder fuels are things that could wick that fire up to the top of the tree and surface fuels down along the ground, so different types of vegetation and different types of fuels. Next slide, please. And so I'm presenting a wildfire hazard assessment, it's called the exposure method. And what it reflects is the potential for wildfire activity. So it doesn't say when a fire will happen, how frequently it will happen, just a potential for the wildfire. And we've calculated these exposure maps for 1984, 1994, 2004 and 2014. So it's important to remember, this is the potential activity. Next slide. So one of the things that we've learned with wildfires is that embers are important. I don't know if anyone remembers Fort McMurray, a wildfire in Canada. Lots of houses were burned, and most of those houses burned because of embers. It wasn't the fire directly moving into an area, but it was embers landing on the roofs, landing on vegetation that was close to their house, like unipr trees, and those catching on fire, and then the house becomes engulfed. And so this approach captures embers by looking at 100 meter radius. So what it does is you have hazardous vegetation, and you look in this 100 meter circle, and you look at what is the average amount of hazardous fuel in that cell. So when you're looking at like a particular area, it not only reflects what's the hazardous vegetation in that one specific spot, but the surroundings of that spot, which is how it captures that, the embers. And it's to reflect short-term spotting. Next slide. And so there's 15, 16 different vegetation classes that go into this hazard map. There's evergreen, black spruce, other, we've actually added hemlock to it, which isn't on this table, but that was based on Bear Valley. They wanted to see hemlock because hemlock obviously burns a lot differently than what black spruce does or white spruce. And that's important for the Girdwood area. But you see those top values, those top vegetations have a value of 100. So that means they're the most hazardous, the most flammable, will shoot a lot of embers, is the spruce. And then as you move down, those exposure values get less. So mixed forest has some deciduous in there, deciduous trees, you know, have wet leaves, they can actually put out embers when they land on them, if they're wet enough. So you'll see lower exposure values, and as you move down into the fens, pure deciduous is 33, and you get into the wet stuff, bogs, water, zero. So we take this vegetation data and we create a hazardous fuels map based on these numbers here, and then do our search radius to figure out what is the average exposure within that cell. So 100 means all hazardous fuels, 0 means very few hazardous fuels. So next. And so this is what Anchorage looks like as a whole, and this is our map is to kind of get you familiarized with the color scheme. So the reds indicate high hazardous fuels, high wildfire hazard. So kind of the Campbell area there in Anchorage, you see reds, higher values. The blue indicates low wildfire hazard. And so one thing that I did want to stress for Girdwood, because Girdwood is a little different, you know, the climate is different than Anchorage, is that this method again looks at, at potential, not probability. What we found is that in drought years, vegetation that doesn't normally burn will burn. We've actually looked at 2004, 2019, at the vegetation layers here, and some things that usually don't burn during those drought years did burn. This map does not incorporate climate, like how much precipitation an area gets. And from what I hear, Girdwood gets a lot of rain, which is not reflected in this map. So next. And so here's what the vegetation looks like. You'll see that there's 15 different layers there. Now, the light purple kind of stuff, I can't use my mouse on your screen, but the light purple stuff is hemlock, where we switched out evergreen, which had a higher, yep, flammability with the lower hemlock. You'll see there's a lot of light, light green, that's, you have white spruce or other spruce. The bright green is a lot of grasses and deciduous trees. So in areas where you see kind of that pea green, that's going to be higher wildfire exposure values are probably going to be there, because it's a higher hazardous fuel. The brown areas are also woodland areas, so taller trees, got some spruce in there, those will be higher hazardous fuels. So we have this vegetation map, and now if we go to the next slide, we'll see how that translates into the wildfire hazard. So this is what the wildfire hazard or exposure looks like for the Girdwood, Girdwood area. I think it, you know, might be a little high, because it doesn't account for the climate that's in Girdwood. But basically, this is kind of what the vegetation and hazardous fuels indicate the wildfire exposure is in the Girdwood area. So, you know, I'd be interested to hear what people have to say on this, but overall, it looks like, you know, around Girdwood, you have some areas of, you know, higher exposure, higher flammabilities. As you get to the coast, it goes less, but overall, that's, that's what it looks like. If we go to the next slide. This is an example of the change, so I wanted to look at how has wildfire hazard changed from 1984 to 2014. And you'll see overall, not a whole lot of change. You see some brown colors, which indicates an increase in wildfire hazard. You know, that might just be spruce trees starting to, you know, get older. This information is based on Remote Sense data, so it's satellites. And, you know, as the trees grow taller, the spruce trees, they can be picked up more by the, by the satellites. But I don't see any areas where suddenly there's a huge increase in wildfire hazard, or even a decrease. Next slide. And this just I put in here for your guys' reference, in case you wanted to have a closer look to see what the Girdwood area looks like. I think I saw in the paper some development talk was going on, and maybe maps like this might be helpful, you can go to the next one. And again, just kind of so you can look in closer to see what the wildfire hazard looks like in the Girdwood area. You know, looking in closer, there is a lot of high values around where people live. I don't know if that's a concern, if people do think that they have high wildfire hazard in Girdwood. Yeah, I'd be interested to hear about that. Next slide. And again, the change, so let's go to the next slide. And so the, the goal is to provide communities with a planning tool to help communities identify where wildfires are most likely to get into a community, so you can prioritize mitigation. So if you can click on that link to that app there. And so this will bring up an app, and it has a splash screen to it that says, you know, this is what the data is. So if you want, you can click Got It for the interactive legend there. And then you have a legend on the side, and let's zoom in kind of on Anchorage. Yep. And so as you zoom in, the community council boundaries will start to show up. And if we go down towards Girdwood. So what you can do is you can click on any one of those councils, like click on the Eagle River Valley just once over there on that, over on the legend, on your left-hand side. Down, yep, there. And that gets rid of, you know, the, the boundary in your area, now you can zoom further in on Girdwood. And streets will start to pop up, and you can just explore things on your own after I'm done with this conversation, to help with planning and to figure out, you know, how you might want to deal with wildfire hazards, should you do so. Sometimes it's a little slow, I know for me at home, it can be a little slow. I usually have to go into work, but eventually the rose layer will pop up. Those hash lines that you see, those are the park boundaries, because land ownership, I find, really does drive wildfire hazards. So while that's loading, you want to go back to the PowerPoint, please? Okay, next slide. So what can you do? Defensible space, I really want to stress that, and especially focusing on the first 0 to 30, 0 to 5 feet around your house, like having a rock buffer, in case, you know, the grass catches on fire. Having a rock buffer will help keep that, the fire from moving up into your house. Not having propane tanks next to your house, keeping your gutters clean. Roofs that, you know, aren't made of wood, that like to ignite, so really that your house in your immediate areas is most important. Also pruning up, or limbing up spruce trees, 6 to 8 feet is a good idea. I want to stress, you don't have to cut down all of your trees to be fire-wise. And, you know, deciduous, as I mentioned, trees are very, very good. If you limb up your trees, not have, you know, the, the evergreen trees, spruce trees right next to your house, that, that's a good idea, but you don't have to cut down everything, I think people get worried that they do. Next slide. Alaska, you know, there is a fire-wise program, and that's John C. there, he used to work with the muni and did fire-wise inspections. I would put a plug that, you know, the fire department really could use some help with doing mitigation activities. John C. is retired, and even that position was kind of part-time. And they could have a full-time person there going after money to help with wildfire mitigation activities within the Anchorage area, especially in places with spruce bark beetle issues. Next slide. And so over the last couple of years, I've been working with the Rabbit Creek Community Council area. We've held kind of mock evacuation events, you know, if you can't get out, because egress is an issue, at least in, in the Rabbit Creek, and I could see in Girdwood, what's the safe house? Where should you go in case there is a wildfire and I can't get out? Talking about what to do if you have motor homes, trying to get those out during a wildfire is not a good idea. But we get to talk about things like that and do kind of fire-wise inspections and have games of it, who has the lowest score? You know, the best protected house. So it really is a community, a community event and a community concern. And the last thing is, is, you know, maybe you want to talk with the muni about putting in fire breaks to, to help get firefighters in there and let them do their job. Fire breaks don't stop a fire, they let firefighters do their jobs safely and try to keep the fire away from, say, your house or your community. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Jen. Do, are there any questions from the board or members of the community? Well, I'm going to throw in the first question, and you, you mentioned about the, the climate. Obviously, we have a, you know, we're a rainforest, we have a very wet climate most years, but we definitely have years where the summer is very dry. Although I think the projections are we will get wetter over the next couple of decades. How much does that matter? Because, you know, my, I kind of think to myself, we're a very wet place, we probably don't have to worry about fire.
Well, I mean, to me, you could just take that one drought year, like 2019, you know, which is an extremely dry, dry year in, in South Central. And I mean, if the fire starts, you really, it's just, one big event can take out, a community can take out a neighborhood. So it's kind of, you're playing the games, how likely is this to occur? I think I'd rather be safe than sorry, you know, if, you know, if I could do something.
Thank you. Marco? Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Most of our spruce trees around here are either Sitka or Lutz spruce. Are there, is there a significant difference between Sitka spruce and black spruce? I don't know of any black spruce in Girdwood Valley.
I would say that Sitka spruce is probably a little bit less flammable than, than black spruce. So if I could incorporate different types of spruce into the model, I could. The hemlock, I was able to grab from the previous wildfire exposure that the muni did with Sue Rodman, they had a layer, but I think it probably would lower it a bit. But I see Michelle is on, she might be a better expert, being a fireperson.
Michelle?
Uh, okay. Sorry, yeah, yeah. Can you hear me? I can't, I can't, I need audio.
I can't totally do audio on the phone, so I probably lost all audio right now for you guys.
Um, Marco asked about the difference between, uh, okay.
I can barely, I can barely understand you.
Michelle, can I mute something?
Spruce, which Marco mentioned. Um, black spruce is the type of spruce that's what you see in those traditional tag forests or areas of fog. Around Alaska, you know, tag of forest classically is actually like little trees. So you see that in Fairbanks, there have serotinous cones there. It is a heat fire to burn, that's why you see mosaic in the area. A lot, you know, fuel type is just one product of looking at wildfire. Obviously, the fuel and drought moisture codes for the day, wind plays a large dynamic. And then also, you know, there's a, the fuel code in the 90s, when I was the forester for AFD with Sue Rodman. I'd like to talk about the fact that we all, sorry, got dog here. We also were working with a couple of the wildfire modeling people from Prescott, Arizona, who are working on looking at adding in air for houses. A lot of issues also come with houses as a fuel type, right? Obviously, Jen mentioned the issue of roofs. We know that if you were in an area that was under large fire potential and you had a shake roof, traditionally, that's basically a no-go. And you know that that house with, is 80% wise gonna, gonna go. I guess, you know, I'm trying to think about response to this, having had 20 years of fire experience and deploying to large fires across the US. And I, I think that the, the modeling doesn't show anything that I think should be a surprise to anybody. And I think having looked on defensible space projects and the fire-wise projects for many years in a past job, you know, it's really what the community wants to see in terms of defensible space. I also worked in the District of North Vancouver, where we had a wildfire code that was enforced in wildfire areas, where we actually did a wildfire code. And so if you were developing new properties in that area, you had to develop to that wildfire code level. The municipality, in the 90s, we did work on a draft wildfire code, and that was not, not approved by the municipality, is something that we needed to move forward with as part of that larger wildfire mitigation program. So it comes down to the thing of what can the community do? And in terms of looking for fire breaks, you could incorporate that into some trail design, I would say, or road design, and that evacuation is always, you know, that's a near and dear issue to my heart. My biggest concern, I would say, taking my 20 years of experience, would be that we would have a large wind event during a July, super hot extreme weather red flag day that would happen in the lower valley, that would then spread the fire and the embers up. Traditionally, what we see is we see a one-mile spotting radius during extreme wildfire. And, you know, in the years past, you would never say that hardwoods would carry a crown fire. However, in recent five years, I think, on deployments around Alaska, we've seen a running crown fire in hardwoods or mixed stands that you would not normally see. So, yeah, I could talk to you guys for hours, I'm going to shut up now. But anyway, super interesting, super glad this is happening, and yeah, good job.
Yeah, some of the recent work coming out of wildfires in urban areas show that distance between buildings is very important. Having buildings too close together is associated with houses burning. So that zero lot line they've been talking about in Fairbanks is a bad thing, you really want to have space between buildings.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any other questions, and we do have a kind of a busy evening, so I know there's plenty. Your contact information, I believe, is on the presentation, it's in our packet, so can people, you okay with people following up directly?
Yes, yes, please feel free to reach out to me, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the presentation, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, which is the Legislative Report. So we'll start off with our state representatives and senators. Is, I think I saw Matthew, is anybody on for either Senator Holland or Representative Kaufman?
I'm here for Representative Kaufman.
Hi, Matthew, please go ahead.
Thank you. So I just got down to Juneau. About half moved into my place down here, but session starts tomorrow. At 1am is the first floor session, but even today, we've had, had a bunch of meetings today. And today, we had legislative budget audit committee meeting on one, an issue that's been getting a fair amount of press with the permanent fund executive director termination. Kind of more of a fact-finding meeting, we're probably going to have more of those, probably in about two weeks. So this session is probably going to be less special sessions, just likely because of the redistricting causing, you know, 59 of 60 legislators to be, to be running, you know, or seats are going to be up for election. So that's going to be a factor, but we're going to be, you know, really focused on fiscal policy and then a few other, I think there's some quick ones that we are going to be able to get on littler bills that we have. An example is like a document reduction bill that says the executive branch needs to go back and look at what all reports they're producing. A big list of those and say, are we producing in print or digitally? If we are producing in print, can we do it digitally? Just that step right there, that's estimated to save like 600,000 or 700,000 a year. That one is, you know, going toward, it's going to the House floor pretty soon, hopefully pretty soon. So that's an example, one that I think it's a, it should be a quicker win. There's all the fiscal policy bills, the, the main, big ones are spending cap that we have one that we proposed, and the governor has one he's proposed. Then there's also the permanent fund structural fixes, which are one of the more, another issue that gets a lot of press. But the budget, you know, we're starting budget subcommittees next week. But, um, the budget, you know, we're starting budget subcommittees next week. Uh, I think our first subcommittee meeting is on environmental conservation and that is on the twenty-fifth. So we're gonna be starting those and those will, it's, those, those budget subcommittee meetings are, um, subcommittees of the finance committee and that's kind of where you dive into each department individually and kind of do more of a deep dive into the department budgets. Finish those, probably takes four or five meetings, give or take for some of the larger departments, it takes a little bit longer. Um, so they'll be trying to get most of those meetings done by day thirty of the session, which is about February, it was, session starts tomorrow, so it's thirty days from tomorrow, February eighteenth roughly. Um, and that thirtieth day of session is when the governor will come out with government budget. And that is a normal practice at a thirtieth day of session, normally they come out with the government budget, they call it. Cause he came out with, uh, governor's budget around December fifteenth, I don't remember the exact date, but it was around December fifteenth. So that's what we're working off of right now. Then there'll be the government budget on the thirtieth day of session. It'll basically just have more federal, more of the guidance, federal guidance, um, included. Cause the current budget doesn't really have a ton of that federal money in there, has some of that money in there. Um, it's helping with some operations, you know, spending, but also most of that money that is federal money in the current budget is going to the fairy system. So it'll be a little more guidance, uh, we'll get a little bit better idea of what all the size is of the federal infrastructure money that we can spend this year. We're working with community councils and I actually, a little embarrassed, I haven't forgotten with this community council yet to talk about capital projects specifically, but, um, hold me to that, Mike and Brianna, I need to get in contact with you guys and, and we need to set up a meeting because we've been trying to get with each community council individually, um, before the whole capital budget development process goes far. And just go through, we've been going through the CIP survey lists and just walking through like the top seven or eight priorities and saying whether or not it's something that we or one of the senators needs to put into CAPSIS, which is our capital project, um, request system, it's how we create project folders for state funding sometimes. Or whether we need to work with Assemblyman John Weddleton and, um, the, the municipal planning organization and the, the Muni planning department to, to try to get it into AMATS and just kind of walk through each of those priorities and see what the best, what the best way to progress each of those projects are. So I need to get with you guys on that. Um, and then another thing we've been trying to do with each community council, um, is try to get one or two board members from each community council kind of in our area, kind of hillside, South Hillside, I'm in, um, Girdwood. To try to get like a, I'm not sure what we're calling it, you have like a grants group together. Um, cause a lot of the federal money, uh, it's a lot more than I can really explain right now, but basically it'll be coming over the next four or five years. And what it, what it really is gonna be is an expansion of things that are in current plans or, or with AMATS, the, the TIP that'll, that'll be coming out, um, things that are in plans over the next four years. It'll really be an expansion of that, but then there'll also be a big piece of it that's competitive. So trying to get a group of community councils together that we can funnel, um, notice of funding opportunities that we receive from the federal delegation, federal agencies too. And then that way it can get disseminated through community councils that way. And also kind of, kind of work as a group to figure out the best way to package and, um, administer. And, um, maybe possibly like have somebody in one of those community councils who's good at grant writing, something like that. Um, an example of, of, of that is I know that there's gonna be some federal money that's gonna go through that grant process for, um, wildfire mitigation. And it's so if, if things like firewise or, um, low cost connections that some other places on the hillside need fire mitigation, fire escape routes, um, that's one that we would funnel through once we get that notice of funding opportunity from federal agencies. And that way it'd just be a little bit easier. So that's another meeting we're, we're trying to set up over the next week or two. Uh, I also need to get with Mike and Brianna about that, but, so kind of a bunch of stuff. If you guys have any questions, um, or anything that might not have touched on, just ask away. Be here for that.
Thank you very much, Matthew, I do have one, well, two quick questions. Um, one is obviously the, as I think we've discussed in the past, um, Girdwood and the Ternigan Arby Community Council are not within the AMATS area. So, uh, we have to go through a kind of different process and a competitive grant across the whole state process. It's not, doesn't go through AMATS and I know that complicates things, it makes some things easier, but it also complicates others. Um, and my other, um, my other question was, um, the, at least the current, uh, redistrict is set up. Um, I believe, um, Representative Kaufman would not be running for reelection in the area that includes Girdwood. He'd be running in an area which is a little bit further north. So is he planning to move and join us?
Join us. Uh, I don't know if he has any plans for that right now, but yeah, he's on that Prospect Bite, uh, area. Kind of just above Hilltop, so that, um, Latty Shaw is the current representative for that area that's all between there and, and New Sewer and kind of, kind of gonna be flipping districts within. Um, but we will still be here, you guys are still at current constituency.
Right.
Um, but, and, and even in, even in the future, we won't totally be disconnected from you guys. Uh, I, I think a lot of the hillside and, and we, we had an infrastructure meeting, um, right, right around Christmas and started kind of surface, we brought a lot of hillside community councils every, um, together and we had some people from our federal delegation there and EOT and the mayor and governor's office. And we also talked about all the projects that all the different community councils have sourced. And there's a lot of real common, uh, common needs, even down to Girdwood with the wildfire mitigation, a lot of the trail stuff and all that. So we, we will still be working with you guys and, and that's a, I, I, I think, I hope.
Glad to hear that.
Join the community council.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board of the community? I'm not seeing any hands, so if you have a question, you can't raise your hand, just say so now. Okay, thank you, I, I didn't see many representative from, um, or anybody representing Senator Holland, but I may have missed, if anyone is representing Senator Holland, can they make themselves known? Okay, let's move on to assembly members, I saw John Weddleton on, John, do you want to go ahead?
Uh, sure, I am here, thanks. Uh, just hit some things really quick. Uh, and I see that on the next, our quarterly meeting next week, that the Girdwood Fire and Rescue Emergency EMS payment, I guess that's still not got yet, so appreciate your tracking that and that's high priority. And then it was good to see that, uh, the mayor did proclaim an emergency for the rainfall, so I guess hopefully something's moving along there too. Um, you know, Jen was here, uh, speaking and, and, um, she's been real active, uh, with a firewise group on the hillside and we got four thousand dollars for a grant to do a study up there and that's something, if that works out well, it might be something that could be extended to Girdwood, you know, with a further grant, so that's, uh, kind of good news. Um, some big things going on, you know, I'm continuing to work on that group that's, um, what we call exit from mass care, which is getting people out of the Sullivan Arena largely and then a couple hotels we've got people in. And that's moving forward, uh, pretty well, we've got, uh, working with philanthropy and some businesses, uh, you know, in the process of buying the sock guy in, which is, uh, I think it's C Street and Fireweed and that would be ultimately to get medically fragile people in there. You know, there's people who are in wheelchairs and con and stuff in Sullivan Arena and just, I mean, think about that, it just doesn't make sense. So, uh, that's moving forward and then the Barrett Inn for people who have jobs and they're trying to function in the Sullivan Arena. So people like that. And there's, um, RFP out for, you know, potentially building a new single adult shelter somewhere. So anyway, there's a number of components there, but they're moving forward. Um, they are not quick though and will be, um, you know, our goal is to get out of the Sullivan by the end of June and that would, um, is looking more and more aspirational and less realistic, which is, uh, unfortunate, but maybe we'll, we will manage to hit that. Um, reapportionment, but if you, uh, Girdwood will still be Girdwood and won't be chopped in half, but, you know, who would represent you ultimately in the shape of District Six could be very different. If you go to the assembly website and click on committees, you can scroll down to the reapportionment committee and you'll see that there's four maps that might come across as proposals, but they're not really quite that yet. Uh, that is just the, uh, map company that we're working with said, these four things work by the numbers, start with these. So you can draw anything, it's just, but that is something where you can kind of say, okay, well, let me tweak this one a little bit and move this piece here, um, just to see how it might work. So I'd hope you would look at that. You know, if you got put in with, um, you know, South, you know, Bay Shore and Ocean View and Girdwood, that's not quite the fit of having hillside and kind of that sensibility, you know, at least also included with, with Girdwood. Um, you know, I'm happy to represent all those areas now, but, uh, that may change. So you can, uh, look at the website and then there was also two public meetings about this. The town halls at the Wildomarston and the Lusac, one is on January twenty-sixth and that's live. And then one's on the twenty-seventh, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-sixth is Teams and the twenty-seventh is at the Wildomarston. And sometime, probably the weekend right after that, Suzanne and I will have a, a meeting, uh, just to kind of get feedback, what people may have seen there, just talk about it and see where people are with it. But anyway, it won't take effect for this election, it would be afterwards, um, sometime. And I can't tell you if it would be March, April, May, June, July, we'll just see how the process goes. Um, you heard about the infrastructure projects and I am really pleased the way that, um, the legislators, assembly members, we've been working together on this. It's, um, unfortunately uncommon really for us to get together, even though we represent the same areas, same constituents. Um, but I think this is so important that, you know, especially James Kaufman, um, is, um, teamed up and have hosted a meeting on it. And we're working with, um, road service areas in, um, the hillside and all. So I hope that, you know, we do need to get you guys in on it. And, and part of it is, you know, because a lot of it's grant based, you know, smaller areas and communities may not make the cut because they just don't have the juice to get a grant writing. And, you know, we want to get projects in your area, you know, on that list and in play, so definitely on board with that. Uh, we have, uh, meeting on Wednesday, it's a little bit unusual, it's a special meeting. We made it Wednesday because, um, some things had to be introduced and you need at least a week. And Tuesday to Tuesday is six days, so we have a meeting this coming Wednesday. A bunch of interesting things there, um, that were on, uh, one was to amend the charter require, uh, that the clerk be elected. And I think the goal there, that came from the mayor, was to have elections run by an elected person. As it was phrased, I didn't really quite do it because the clerk mostly runs the assembly branch and not runs elections, so that would have been a little awkward to have that elected. So we kind of punted that and that will have a public hearing in August. Uh, the amendment to the charter, oh, there's a one that I put forward, which would be to amend the charter. Uh, we have in there a sixty percent threshold on some things and the, uh, court said that's illegal, it's got to be fifty percent plus one. So I just have one put forward that would just clear out the sixty percent threshold stuff so that the charter says what is in fact legal, it would be fifty percent. And we decided not to put that on the ballot for this year, that'll, public hearing in August and, and hopefully on for, um, twenty-three election. Uh, there's another one that is to amend the charter for marijuana tax to fund early childhood education. And we won't put that on the ballot this year, but that has a public hearing in May. There's two things for Eagle Exit, which is not just an Eagle River thing, that of course is very important to all of Anchorage. I, I don't expect either one would be put up for a vote, they're just not ready. Um, you can't really vote on something, you don't know what, you know, what would Eagle River get, what would they not if there were a split? Um, but it might be, uh, the discussion might be educational for Girdwood, for the occasional thoughts of, um, spinning off Girdwood. There is one thing that could still go on the ballot, that's a charter change, and that's something that I put forward with, uh, Member Kennedy. And that is to make more clear for the requirements of filling a vacancy in the office of mayor. And, and you know, there's a lot of controversy over when, uh, Mayor Berkowitz, um, resigned. And the charter says that it can be filled by a regular or special election, so you have a choice. But many people read it as, oh, you have to do a special election and the phrasing, uh, not sooner than ninety days, people took as it must be done before ninety days, whereas the charter is really saying, no, you can't do it too quick. So this just spells it out really clearly, what you can do and when. And I, um, I think it works, I mean, it's still a mess, I mean, the best thing is for mayors to fulfill their terms and not, um, resign or, or pass away. So, but that is up and I'd appreciate any feedback on it, it's posted online with our agenda. Um, so those are some highlights, we passed the school bond, which will be quite large, but it's a two-year bond and it includes inlet view, rebuilding inlet view, and that's, um, pretty significant, I think about thirty million dollars. Um, and we're, the other bonds, it don't, it really don't affect you guys too much immediately, but you know, if we do nice things in the broader city, it's a good thing for all of us. Uh, so that are some highlights, thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Um, yeah, I think we, the, we're actually discussing reapportionment later on in the meeting. Uh, we have a first discussion about that and we may have, do some form, something formal next meeting. So thank you.
Oh, good.
And, uh, and, uh, we have been, both Brianna and I were invited and did attend the discussions, uh, earlier, uh, with, um, Representative Kaufman about, uh, putting together a, a sort of regional applications for, for grants. There definitely a lot of issues with the Lursters on the hillside where I think working together makes perfect sense. Thank you, any other questions?
I think we're good, it's not going.
Yeah, it looks very positive. Any other questions for, uh, for our assembly person? I'm not seeing any, so let's move on to school board. Kelly Listens, who's the liaison for this part of Anchorage?
Great, can you, great, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Wonderful, well, John stole a little bit of my thunder, I'll get back to that in just a moment. Um, the biggest news from the school board continues to be that we are, um, underway on our superintendent search. And just a little bit ago, I emailed the board of supervisors, um, a number of links, uh, because the links will take you to these, um, these, uh, websites that will be helpful. Um, so there is a homepage for the superintendent search with a lot of information. Um, it's at ASDK12.org/leadership. And through that homepage, you can see that there are links to community surveys. So one thing we are trying to do is crowdsource input for what the community, what, um, parents, students, community members, uh, teachers, what everybody would like to see in our new superintendent. And I think that that expires on February second, so that's something to do, you know, in the next two weeks. Um, over the next week and a half, there are going to be four virtual town halls conducted on behalf of the board by a group called Leadership Anchorage. And they are helping us with an external community, um, sort of translating community interests, um, to us and they'll be giving us a report. So there are links to those four virtual town halls, uh, it'll be a webinar style. And again, I think that that is on the website, that slash leadership page. Um, as John mentioned, uh, the assembly did pass or approve, um, our two-year bond package. When you look at it divided over those two years, it's squarely in line with other annual bonds. Um, I think it's remarkable though for the scope, it includes thirty-eight school projects at thirty-one sites, so that's nearly a third of the district and it focuses on deferred maintenance and security. It does have the inlet view school, it has got a whole lot more. Um, so we will be talking more about that, I think, at our community councils with ASD staff over the next month, month and a half. Um, the budget discussions are coming up, I, again, I have a link to the pro forma budget, which was, uh, sort of the school board's advance notice of what we might expect over the next couple of weeks. We received, actually the community received an email from Dr. Bishop. There may, staffing shortages are a challenge here in Anchorage and across the country right now with, with Omicron. Um, there may be bus route suspensions, I'm not sure that Girdwood would be, um, I don't know that you guys, you guys are kind of on an island, so, um, I don't know that you guys would ever be included in that, but there is a link, um, and GBOS, uh, leadership, you all, you have all of those links. And we were advised, but I haven't seen yet, that there's gonna be a new element of our COVID dashboard that will allow parents to see cases in grade level bands in our schools. So I don't really know what that means, but, um, maybe it's gonna be launched tomorrow, I'm not, I'm not totally sure. Um, upcoming events include our regular meetings, uh, we have one tomorrow night at six o'clock and again on February eighth, also, also at six. We have committee meetings this week on the nineteenth, communications meets at three thirty, governance at four thirty and then finance meeting, uh, committee meeting meets in January twenty-sixth at noon. So, um, GBOS, you have all of those notes. Any quick questions before I let you all go?
Uh, I do have a quick question, I'm not sure if it's, um, best handled by you or perhaps by John Weddleton, but, um, last year we had a, a kind of an additional component to our tax bills, which is the one point oh seven mil for, uh, additional school bond, um, payments, which were not paid for by the state, unlike previous years. I know there's been some changes, are we expecting to see the same thing again this year and what will happen subsequent years? I'm unclear where that currently stands.
My sense is that the governor has proposed a budget that includes one hundred percent of bond debt coverage. So I think that that needs to be approved in Juneau as part of the budget process and that we would know. and that we would know more later on. Does that answer your question?
Would that be from 2023 onwards or would it be retroactive to 2022?
I don't know the answer to that. Yes. Thank you for that question. I will get to the answer of that. It's a good question and I kind of recall you had a similar question a few months ago about that sort of cost shift. Because, because when the state doesn't follow its end of that agreement, yes, that's a shift to our local taxpayers. So that's what did happen last year. And it's my understanding that that's not going to happen this year if the budget passes. But that's a loose understanding and I can get back to you.
I don't know if anyone else cannot, if Matthew, if you happen to know, I'd appreciate a comment. If you don't know, that's fine.
That's currently in the governor's budget, the yearly, like this 14, 15. Currently it is, so it has to go through the whole legislative budget process. It would be in that, that operating budget whenever it got passed. If it goes through the finance committee processes and that's how it ends up. And so that would be for the FY 2023. FY 23 really starts July. Yeah, I think I'm, I think I have that. So I don't think that it would be retroactive and I don't think it's in a supplemental budget, which is for anything that got left out of the FY 22, which we're currently in. We're about halfway through FY 22. But it would be for FY 23. And I think there's a lawsuit on the FY 22 school bond debt reimbursement. I believe it was vetoes and that it wasn't fully funded in the budget. And I think there's a lawsuit about that. It could be a little off. I can get back to you with that. Tried to talk.
Okay. We have, we have the local property gaining good with property assessments have gone up again. And unlike our local services, which if our assessments go up, the service rate goes down. So we pay basically the same when it comes to school bond, school taxes in general and school bond reimbursement. When our assessments go up, those taxes go up. So it does matter here. Okay, we can follow up after meeting. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions for Kelly Lessons? Okay. Thank you very much, Kelly. Let's move on to item number three, which is supervisor reports. So I'll just go around the, the board and see if anyone wants to make a report. I'll start off with Brianna.
Yes. Thanks, Mike. For the Girdwood Trails Committee, they've had regular meeting on January 4th and that was all the minutes are available for that. And then in a special meeting is tomorrow night for proposed amendments to the Girdwood Trails Master Plan. And that's been the feature of all the meetings so far. And we have that on the agenda now later. So anyone on the call that would like to participate in the meeting, the links are on the GBOS website or all the information for tomorrow night's meeting. Thanks. And cemetery is no update.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to Jennifer. Do you have a report?
No, no update.
Thank you. Guy?
Yeah, sure. Chief Weston's on here, so she'll probably be able to expand on this. But it sounds like they've had a really busy month and on top of that, they've been able to hand out well over 1,800 home COVID testing kits. So that's much appreciated.
Thank you. We'll move on to, we'll probably hear from Chief Weston in the next section. Amanda, are you still on? Do you have a report? I'm not seeing you on the list, but you may be calling in. Is he there, Amanda? Okay, it looks like we may have lost Amanda, so we should probably minute that. Okay, let's move on to service provider reports then. So as promised, we'll go straight to fire with Chief Weston. Please go ahead. Sorry, I do see a question from Julie. Was that relating to the last item, Julie?
Yeah, it was. Thanks. You moved kind of quick and I was having trouble getting my hand up.
Sure.
I was wondering if the Girdwood Trails Plan report could be part of Supervisor Sullivan's report right now or part of staff report coming up as opposed to number 12 on the agenda? I know we've had updates like that as part of both of those reports in the past.
I'll see if Kyle wants to make a, wants to be able to add just the, the highlights in roads, parks and rec. The next, within this section. Great. So let's move on to Chief Weston. Please go ahead.
Hi there. So let me see if I can do this without feedback. Okay, um, so, oh, we're still getting feedback. I'm gonna delete myself here. There we go. That should work. Okay. Okay, I'm going to, I unfortunately have lost my audio just now to do this. Just to mention that we have a new security camera pointed at our foyer. So if you come into the foyer for us, we have a security camera there so we can see you. Primarily, this is because we do get a lot of walk-ins in the middle of the night, sometimes when they're busy, sort of festive weekends in Girdwood. And so this will allow when everyone's sleeping on the other side of the station, them to at least get a look at who's over here ringing the doorbell. So just know that. And then if you for some reason need a safe place to do something, it is not monitored. It's not recorded, but there is a camera there. So I just want to let everybody know about that. As Guy mentioned, we did hand out over 1,800 COVID home test kits, which really translates into 3,600 COVID home test kits in Ternigan Arm. Super happy about that and super happy that the health department has been every once in a while just showing up with 200 test kits. Super happy about that, getting that out. Thank you to the CERT volunteers that helped me distribute. If we do have some left at the moment, amazing. If you do need a kit and you are sick, then you can email me at chief@girdwoodfire.com. Again, chief@girdwoodfire.com and I will make, I will have someone deliver a kit to your house so you are not out walking around in public as supplies last. If you are well, you could also email me and we can work up a time for you to meet. What I do not, what I'm asking is for a please for people to not come and interact with the firefighters at the station about COVID test kits because we are trying to keep our remaining staff well. We have been hit by COVID and so that's decreased our staffing and we're super busy. We've had 38 calls so far this year. In 2021, we had around 430 calls and of the EMS calls, 68, 63% of those were ALS. And contract wise, the thing that never ends, we are getting our first quarter drop on Thursday. However, it's not the right number, but they will fix it hopefully in, later in the next couple of quarters. So anyway, super happy for everybody for supporting us in this busy time. Just a reminder, if you can, to get an N95 mask to wear it. If you have a COVID test and you want to share it with someone, if you have an extra box there, that's good too. And then just let's all work together to stay safe and make sure that we can sort of pounce on this latest outbreak in Girdwood and keep it super small.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to police with, would you have PD? Chief F A, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I had some stats from last month. I'm not sure if you can hear me. Last month's stat, we're finishing off this month and we're going to give you overall yearly stats. But for last month, I need to make sure I have the correct month here. Yeah, for November, we had a total number of calls in the Girdwood area of 126 calls, of which 27 was traffic type fences, driving violation, traffic stops, DUI checks. 81 of it, which were security checks in the area. Three suspicious activities calls, two property crime calls, three assaults and disturbances, eight welfare checks and two where we consider other calls, including animal control calls of that nature. Just to recap, the month prior in October, we had a total of 136 calls in that area. So we'll be getting you by probably the end of this month, the year round stats for the whole year in Girdwood area. With that, the end of this month, one of our officers, Officer Ruben Garcia, will be attending the Recertification Academy in Sitka, Alaska for three weeks. During that time, we modified our schedule so it won't affect the coverage in the Girdwood area. Lieutenant Corb will be covering his shift, so we'll still maintain the same coverage of that area. Other than that, some activities that occurred this month in the Girdwood area or within the last 30 days, and we're, we're actually talking to the Anchorage District Attorney's Office in regards to, we have one particular subject that we've contacted several times in the last three weeks in the Girdwood area. During those times, he was arrested on separate occasions on multiple property crimes. And yet he's still being released. So the last time, we also charged him with another felony property crime as well as assault on a police officer. So we're actually going to try to petition the Anchorage DA's office if that subject is released, that he's actually asked not to return back to Girdwood. He does not live in the Girdwood area. He lives in the Anchorage area. But we frequently have, they're not really transients, but they seem to think Girdwood's an area of opportunity for them. So we're working with the Anchorage District Attorney's Office to see if that person, if he is released, if he's, I don't want to say banned, but if there's conditions that he's to stay away from the Girdwood area that he does not live or reside or work in. Other than that, with winter here, we've had several, a couple of calls on snow machine or ATV violations, none of which was on the road highway itself, which I talked about last meeting during the, well, I believe it was a Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting regarding soft road vehicles on highways or roadways, primarily off the Alieska Highway, which since the municipality of Anchorage adopted ordinances that forbid off-road vehicles on roadway, we're primarily enforcing the off-road vehicle on the highway aspect, Alieska Highway, because that can be real dangerous for snow machines or four-wheelers to be on that highway. Other than that, like I said, most times it's been pretty good. People at Girdwood have been really supportive of our officers out there and we look forward to continuing our service.
Thank you very much. I should just ask, are you, is staffing, I know other, many other organizations have had staffing issues over the last few weeks with COVID. Are you, is everything looking good from WPD point of view?
Yes, at this time we are looking good. We did have an impact a couple of weeks ago with the COVID issues. But since then, DDC has changed our protocols. The officer has been cleared for full active duty a while ago, so it hasn't impacted our staffing. I also, I believe I mentioned this during the Public Safety Committee meeting initially in November, with your city council for a budgetary aspect was talking about unfunding one of our positions. We have, that position has been reallocated for funding for this year. So we're continuing recruitment on that one position. So we are one position vacant this time where we're actively recruiting for.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or the community for the chief? I won't be quite so fast this time. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands and I'm not hearing anybody. So we will move on to Kyle, Parks and Rec, Roads. And if you can just briefly speak to the, the trails before we go on to it later.
Sure. In our packet tonight, at the end of our packet is our report from the staff here. So I won't go into detail with a lot of this just to keep brief, since we have a lot on the schedule. But with parks, we've been very active with maintaining the parks. We appreciate our volunteers out there grooming trails and also maintaining different aspects of the park. We have many people who are out there actually just helping to pick up dog waste. So we appreciate all the efforts of our volunteers out there on the trails. As for the trails plan, yes, the Girdwood Trails Plan completed the review of the staff recommended changes at their last meeting. And then they set for a meeting tomorrow night to review GTC member recommendations. There was a motion put forward to approve the plan as amended. Once we completed those recommendations from staff, that motion didn't carry forward. And so a second special meeting was set for tomorrow and a deadline was set last week for people to submit amendments to the plan and, and then present them tomorrow night. So that, that's what will be tomorrow night. New business will be the review of these recommended changes coming from GTC, GTC members themselves. We, following that last meeting, we went to work on creating a red line document of the changes that were approved for the draft. We were working our way on that last week and I had to get tabled as it became a very hectic week with weather, roads and then other subcommittees, deadlines and meetings. So tomorrow we hope to have that finished and then post that red line, red line document to show what has been changed in that trails plan so far and approved through the GTC process. So that's where we stand with that. As for other park amenities and things like that, it's just normal operations out there. If you can get to it, just be careful of all the breakable crust out there in our parks. And then we will be closing up a few grants over this month. One is our KMTA grant for the Virgin Creek Falls. And then one is our RTP grant for the Lower Iditarod. We've wrapped those up and it's on our worklist to get the final paperwork in and close those out there. As always, Margaret does a great job of maintaining our social media and websites and you can find it there. Switching over to roads, last week was definitely extreme weather conditions around here. We started out with freezing rain, which was off and on for 36 hours. And then we moved right into rain, consistent rain. Storm probably about, probably about one, about one and three quarters inch of rain over a 24 hour period. And so we burnt through a lot of our stockpile of sand, dealing with it and then scraping and trying to peel off to get our drainages open and then dealing with drainages that were overflowing. We have tomorrow a steam truck coming out to open up drainages and get things back in line. We were really lucky to get the snow on the backside of the storm. That hour's worth of snow provides more traction than three days of sanding. So we were appreciative to get that in the end. But we look like we have another storm coming ahead of us, so we'll be prepping this week to get ready for that and, and making sure our equipment, we went through two sanders that broke. Fortunately, our contractor has a good inventory of backup equipment and so they were able to replace those fairly quick. I bring them down from Anchorage on that aspect. As for budgets, we haven't resolved the budget or the invoice for December with our road contractor. It's just because they've been dealing with some COVID issues themselves with their accounting staff. But it looks like everybody should be back tomorrow and we hopefully get the bill for September and get that paid and wrap it up. But I'm estimating that will be within budget. As of right now, we've only expended 89% of the roads budget for this year. We do have a bill coming, so that will bring us up. But we'll be looking at a surplus for public works this year. And then for roads or for parks, we're, we've pretty much wrapped up and we've used 95% of our budget. So we do have a bit of a surplus this year with that parks budget, which will go into our undesignated account. And then for police, we're pretty much fully spent. We did have some of our miscellaneous fund that we use for impounding and, and things along those lines. We didn't have as many impounds as we had years past. So we didn't expend that much with our towing as, as we estimated or have over the last couple of years. And then with fire, there's still a few lingering bills out there associated with equipment and stuff like that. But for the most part, fire will have probably a small surplus because they didn't have as mechanical, many mechanical breakdowns or expensive repairs as they've had in the past in that aspect. And then right now, overall, our capital reserves are in good shape. And we'll talk further about the repairs and, and the, and now the recapturing of funds to pay for those repairs through the emergency declaration later on the agenda. So that's where we stand.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the board? Jennifer, please go ahead.
Yeah, questions for the chairs. I'm getting a couple of questions from the community about, is that the update or do we have another update coming? Like, is that, is that what we have, everything that's going to be said for the Girdwood Trails Plan or is there more?
We have an item later to talk about the Girdwood Trails Plan and the status after, after item 11, like between 11 and 12 at the end of old business. So we'll have a more, a more complete discussion then.
So it is at, excuse me, it's at the end of old business. Is it then an action item?
It's, it's an old business item, so we've discussed it multiple times before. So we'll get an update on status and then see what the, see how that goes.
Okay. All right. I guess I'm sorry. I did not understand that. Okay, all right. I guess I'm sorry I did not understand that when we were voting on it. I thought we were trying to be careful about adding action items at the last minute, and particularly about something that's had as much community process as GTP. I don't, I don't know that we have adequately noticed.
I think that's the, I think the concern is around the community process of GTP. But again, this is an item later on on the agenda, so we can discuss it then, I think. Any other questions from the board or from the community? Julie, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on Supervisor Wingard's comments. Do any of you plan to put forward an action item tonight? This wasn't on the agenda. You've got a huge agenda. I personally don't want to stay on here for a couple more hours if I don't have to, but I will. So is there any plan or inkling about taking action? I don't understand why the update couldn't be done via the staff report or the recreation supervisor report.
I'd like to, personally, I'd like to hear where things are and get a, get a full report from the, from the plan. I mean, we paid, again, I don't want preemptive later discussions because I don't know what people want to do. But I think we've, we've invested quite a lot of, we've invested quite a lot of money into the plan. I'd like to get a proper update on where it is.
Yeah, but today's January seventeenth, and the last trails meeting was January fourth. So if you were really interested, you had plenty of time to put it on the agenda and let the public know that you were going to be talking about it.
I hear you.
It seems disingenuous is what I'm, is what I'm saying. So.
Okay, why, obviously you're speaking to motive there, so I don't think that's an accurate representation at all.
Just for a staff perspective, we have no request for action item tonight. We weren't aware this was going to be on there.
Okay. So we will move on to, I don't see any other questions, so we'll move on to public comment. Public, persons offering public comment, must state the full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Julie, please go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to recognize that today is Martin Luther King Junior Day, a day to commemorate and honor the work and legacy of Dr. King, and also, I think, an especially important day to not just reflect on social injustice and racial inequities, but to recommit as individuals and as a collective to working towards equity and fairness in all aspects of our lives. And I wanted to raise again the anti-racism resolution that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors passed almost sixteen months ago. And that resolution, you committed to convening a community forum on the topic of racism, and you also committed to fostering inclusivity in local governance. And I came here tonight to remind you of those commitments and to ask when you will follow through on the resolution that you passed. And if you can please share your plans with the public, and I hope you'll be able to respond to me now. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other, well, was that a specific request, Julie?
Yes, I was asking if you could respond to me now about when you will follow through with that resolution that you passed sixteen months ago.
Okay, I know there's been, there've been plenty of discussions with other community groups about trying to hold something which is not just tokenistic, but actually is substantive. I'm not aware of any actual, it's really hard to hear. I think you have, there's a lot of noise coming from your line, Julie. Would you be able to mute briefly? Thank you. So there's been a discussion with many other community groups to partner and have an event which is not just tokenistic, but actually substantive, and I believe those conversations are continuing. I don't have any specific update or date for the, for the activity, but it's, it's not ignored as far as I'm aware.
Has you both been part of those conversations?
We can, we can, we can have a agenda item in future, in future meetings if you want to discuss it. Obviously, we just, if we're going to discuss it as a group, we need to do that publicly unnoticed.
Right, which I've asked you to do multiple times prior to tonight, so yes, I would like you to add it to a future agenda, please.
Any other public comments?
My name is Tommy O'Malley, Box five ninety.
Hi, Tommy. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I might have put this comment in with the police, but one of the things that the Public Safety Advisory Committee has gone forward with, and we've been successful in getting money, is for crisis intervention training for our police and our fire department. And this touches on appropriate policing to community sensibilities so that people are treated with compassion. And that follows with the last speaker wondering if the community is going to do something. I think, I think our police are responding more, they're responding appropriately the way that we would like them to, to people that are in crisis or that are different. And I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Tommy. Crystal, did you have a public comment?
I did. This is Crystal Hope, Box eleven thirty-four. And I wanted to briefly speak in regards to the Holton Hills project. And I just want to clarify that I'm not speaking on behalf of any organization, but just my personal thoughts on the matter. And that I really feel like Girdwood should get some kind of direct benefit out of this project if it were to move forward. And I had suggested in the meeting on the twenty-second that that might look like a percentage of each sale to come back directly. I said to another organization, or Girdwood Valley Service Area, and frankly, I would be fine with either. But just that we can have a direct benefit from, from this occurring if it does move forward. And also, I would like to see it be put towards a vote at Land Use Committee. Now that we have seen all three phases, I think that it's the right thing to do to put it in front of the community and say, is this something that we are in support of or not? And because I think that the way that it was presented was in bits and pieces, and I think that it needs to come back in front of us, all in one piece, and get a Girdwood Board of Supervis, a Girdwood Board of Supervisors Resolution of Support or not to move forward prior to the land being disposed, and the land is being voted on to for disposal on January twenty-seventh. So I think those are all points that I think are, have a lot of magnitude and should be considered far more strongly than just a public comment at the meeting tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Crystal. I think when you said a vote for disposal, that's in the, that's for the HLB Advisory Committee?
That's correct. It's a, yes, that is. Thank you. It's January twenty-seventh at eleven thirty AM on Microsoft Teams. And I think that would be the appropriate place for people to provide public testimony regarding the subject.
Right. So my understanding is that's an advisory vote which then goes through additional steps. I know it, if it's a disposal, it should go all the way to the assembly. So that's my understanding. I don't know if anyone on here can clarify that. I don't know if John knows. I'm not sure if we have any one from HLB.
Mike, this is John. Yeah, that would be advisory, but it would carry a lot of weight as well.
Understood. But I assume anything from the community would also carry weight.
Yeah, yes, it would.
Thank you. Karen, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Karen Zakara, Box thirteen seventy-six. I have two comments. First, I just want to say thank you to all the board members and the staff and the community members that come to these meetings regularly. I was on the board. I took my turn, and then I ran away. And I'm here tonight listening to everything because I have something to say later on in the agenda. I just want to say how much I appreciate everyone taking the time to volunteer for the community. I really do appreciate all of your time. And then I did want to follow up with, with what Crystal just said, and being a community member that went to that Holton Hills presentation, I feel strongly that the information that was presented was not adequate or proper comment. And I really do think the community is owed a presentation that is clear and answers the questions that were posed during the meeting. I do not feel that that presentation gave anyone an accurate picture of what is intended or could be potentially voted on at this next meeting. That's my comment.
Thank you, Karen. Any other public comments? Okay. Emma, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just briefly want to chime in because I really appreciate what Crystal said. And knowing the timing of the twenty-seventh, I appreciate also her bringing it up at this meeting. I'm grateful, just like Karen is, for everybody that does come to these meetings. And I have been speaking with two of my neighbors about facilitating a town hall, so I just wanted to bring that up. And anybody that wants to talk more about it, please reach out.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any more. Well, there's plenty I'd like to talk about. The Holton Hills, we'll, we have a lot to cover through, cover tonight. And as I said, the, the discussion on the twenty-seventh is one part of the process. It's definitely not our only opportunities. And it's an opportunity to make public comment and to talk to the HLB Advisory Commission, but there are multiple other opportunities. And there's a, a process through LUC where we'll, we'll talk as a, as a community as well. Okay, so item number five, agenda item LUC twenty-ten dash zero four, case twenty-two seventeen, planning as only commission hearing on February the fourteenth. This is for Glacier City Center, and it's presented by Marco Zakara.
Hi, Mike. Thanks. Kyle, can you bring up the first page of the site plan, please?
Yes, let me, just give me a second here.
It should have been in the packet I sent.
Yeah, I just have to get back up to it. Shrink it down. This one, Marco?
Yes, yes, thank you. So, all right. My name is Marco Zakara, and I'm with Z Architects here in Girdwood. Also with me is Chris Burke, Civil Engineer with F.R. Ballen Associates, and Elise Huggins, Landscape Architect with Earthscape. We are representing Liz and Nathan Ellis, longtime Girdwood residents who are planning to build a mixed-use development on their acre and a half property just north of the Girdwood Post Office, which you can see on this site plan outlined. This is the same parcel that received a conditional use permit for a mixed-use development named Glacier City Center in two thousand and six, when the property was owned by Jeff and Eileen Domain. We are applying for a development master plan for, for this project. Before I present the concept designs, Liz and Nathan would like to make a few comments regarding their revisioning of Glacier City Center. Nathan or Liz, are you on?
Yeah, we're here, Marco. Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for coming. I, I think, so this is our fourth meeting that we presented to the community, and each time we kind of gave a background of how we came about into this project. And I think that's helpful, and for those of you that have already heard it, thanks for your patience. Previous to this, we were into multifamily properties in Anchorage. We used to live in Indian for six years, and we, being part of Turnigat Arm, we moved here. And with our two young kids that go to school here and constant activities, we are trying to focus more on Girdwood. So we vacated all of our properties in Girdwood. And we happened upon this lot because of Jeff Domain, who owned it previous to us, and he was driving the Glacier City Center forward. When two thousand and eight hit and with the crash in the market, he held off. But he held on to the property. And it really speaks to Jeff Domain because, and Eileen Domain, because he had a substantially larger offer than we could ever produce by probably the second biggest home builder in Alaska. And he went with us because he knew we were locals. He knew we were concerned about the community and that we really wanted to form a community space. And that's what he felt Girdwood needed, and that's what we feel Girdwood needs as well. So here we are. We've done a ton of work into this. Marco and the whole team, all of us have been putting a lot of ourselves into it because we care about this community, so. Carry on.
All right, thank you, Nathan. Kyle, can I go on to the next sheet, please? Well, since this is the fourth Girdwood public presentation, as Nathan said, most of, and most of you have seen this, I'm going to try to go through the rest of the presentation fairly quickly and save time for questions at the end. Glacier City Center is in the GC eight zoning district, and the intent of this district, as described in the Girdwood Land Use Regulations, is for the northward, northward commercial and residential expansion of the new Girdwood Town Site Core along High Tower Road, and it should express a visible visual transition from the built-up environment around Town Square to a more forested landscape. So GC seven is the Girdwood Town, Town Core, Town Square area. And then GC eight is the Post Office and Glacier City Center to the north. And then surrounding it on three sides is zoning district GC six. And actually, GC six is on Pro Creek Road, and those, the GC six zoning districts are multifamily only. GC eight, which Glacier City Center is, and is intended to be a commercial district with some residential in it. So in our proposal, Kyle, if you could go on to the next sheet, please? This is our site plan. The proposal is for ten townhouses and one commercial building. The townhouses are arranged on the west edge of the lot abutting California Creek setback. Actually, Kyle, could you go to the previous site plan? That's maybe a little better. So the townhouses are along California Creek. They're the two blocks, and there's five townhouses in each block, so ten total. And they are arranged along California Creek like I said. And the commercial building is in the southwest corner of the property, closest to the Post Office. We envision a horizontal mixed-use development rather than the typical vertical stack mixed-use development in which residences are above the commercial space. What we are proposing is the commercial building will stand alone by itself, close to the Post Office, and the rest of the commercial buildings along High Tower. And then the, the townhouses will be horizontally displaced from them in the more private part of the site. The advantages of this arrangement are in that the, again, as I said, the residential units are in the quieter part of the site with California Creek as a backyard. It enhances the pedestrian connection between the Town Site Core and the commercial building. And then the commercial building itself is arranged along the south edge of the property. And Kyle, could you go to the next sheet, please? The, the commercial building is arranged along the south edge of the property and with its public decks and spaces, and, and most of its windows on the south side facing the Post Office. The, all the, most of the outdoor patios are also on the south side as well. The one advantage of this is that The one advantage of this is that we're not placing any, uh, buildings directly across the neighbors that are across High Tower Road. Uh, most of the activity in the project is as far away from the existing residential development as we can make it. And still, uh, 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 follow the Girdwood Land Use Regulations and have the commercial development along High Tower Road. So that is why the building is in the southwest corner and also it enhances pedestrian connection to the Town Square. And this site plan is a snow storage, natural, natural vegetation, retention, permeable surface areas all exceed what is required by Chapter nine. So can I go to the next sheet, please Kyle? This is the civil site plan and Chris Burke is on. Chris, could you speak to the civil drawing, please?
Uh, sure. Um, the, as Marco kind of said, the residential development is going to be near the, uh, Glacier Creek, uh, side of the property. So the, the orientation of this north is actually to the right side of the page. Um, right now we have the, the existing utilities tying in. The sewer will tie into the, the existing utility on High Tower Road. Um, right now for the water service, we're showing here. At one point there was proposed mainland extension down the California Creek way. Um, but I think the plan, since this was produced, is they're actually going to have a onsite well for the, uh, the water service. Uh, the site generally drains kind of from the northwest to the southeast. And we're going to pretty much keep that same, uh, drainage pattern in place, kind of collected in between the two parking areas there and then tie into the storm drain out in, uh, uh, well, actually like the ditch line of, uh, of High Tower Road there. Sorry, I'm kind of small. I'm trying to read the stuff. Um, and, and, uh, yeah, like Marcus said, trying to keep as much of the, uh, the existing vegetation and, and, uh, and drainage patterns that exist on the site. And so we're not going to impact anything, you know, on the neighboring properties. And, uh, yeah, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Kyle, could you, uh, go on to the next sheet, please then? This is the landscape plan. If any, unless anybody had any questions regarding the civil drawings, uh, well, go ahead and have Elise, uh, describe the landscape plan, please.
So hi everyone, this is Elise Higgins with Earthscape. Um, our goal with this project is, I think they've, um, Marco and Silve talked about this. We want to save as much vegetation as possible. In terms of landscaping, we'll bring back, um, as much native vegetation as possible, focusing on, um, if we could find hamlocks, we will plant hamlocks, um, and fur. Using a mix of deciduous and evergreen plantings. We're hoping to use the central, that triangle or your space that you see in between the parking lots, as a area to clean the water before it hits the storm drain system, using plants to help us do that. That is pretty much, I know you guys have a lot on the agenda, so let's just keep it at that. And I am happy to answer questions.
Elise, uh, what, if, if you don't mind, uh, describing just briefly the Gabian, uh, uh, bio swell, uh, idea you were working with.
Sure, in that triangular area in the center, what we're hoping to do instead of using a traditional curb and gutter approach is we're hoping to, um, put in some Gabian baskets. We'll use, the Gabian baskets will sit, um, six to twelve inches above the adjacent curb. And they'll function as a, a curb, uh, but allow water to flow through the Gabian baskets into that central area, which will be filled with a combination of sedgees and grasses and things that will clean the water and, and store the water before it enters the storm drain system. So it should be, um, we're hoping that the Gabians will be a little bit, have a little bit more character and add a little bit more texture and interest to the, the project as well as being, um, uh, a better technique to, to improve the, the quality of the water.
Okay, thank you, Elise. Um, Kyle, could you, uh, go to the townhouse set, please? Make sure there's a few more renderings of the site, but I think most of you have seen the renderings. Uh, seen the computer model. This is the, this rendering here shows the site from the north, um, northeast. Uh, with the townhouses in the back and building A, uh, the commercial building towards the post office. And the arrangement of the parking lots, we're leaving as much, uh, of the existing vegetation along High Tower Road. There's a, a strip of trees there now. Our, uh, walkway, which will parallel well, uh, High Tower will be in board of the strip of trees, uh, to help connect our, uh, parking lots back to building A. And we're going to try to, um, we're working with the city right now to, uh, to reduce as much of the required onsite lighting as they will allow. Um, to, you know, we, uh, the Girdwood Land Use Regulations require full cutoff light fixtures. And that we do not allow the light to spill off site. And the last thing we want to do is have light spilling into the, the neighbors either to the east or to the north. Um, and so we're working with the city to, um, to, uh, put in, uh, like I said, full cutoff light fixtures and, and, um, there, there's some discussion with the city that about lighting High Tower Road. But I think with, uh, good community comment about keeping, uh, any lights from spilling off site, we can, uh, probably, uh, work with the city so that, to, to remove that requirement. So I think, um, let's, yeah, so this, this next map here is just the, the flood hazard map. We're primarily in the five hundred year flood plain. Um, and those are base flood elevations for each building, each building foot. Uh, first floor will be one foot above the V F E. Um, there's one small, uh, part in the northeast corner that's a hundred year, um, which we will not be building in. The blue is the hundred year flood plain. Uh, next sheet, please. Uh, fire access lanes, we have, uh, fully code compliant fire apparatus access turnaround. All buildings are within hundred and fifty foot hose reach of any fire apparatus. Um, next sheet, please. This is our community parking access plan. Uh, we are allowed to have a certain amount of our parking offsite in the community parking. And this proves out our numbers on that. Uh, next sheet, please. So these are the townhouses. Um, uh, they're pretty typical townhouse layouts, uh, uh, garages and entries on the first floor, uh, living spaces, dining room, kitchen, living room on the second floor. And then two bedrooms on the third floor. Each, uh, each townhouse is about two thousand square feet, uh, actually nineteen forty-four square feet with uh, about fifteen hundred square feet of living space and five hundred square feet of garage space. Uh, can, uh, next sheet, please. These are, are rendered elevations, which are kind of flattened out elevations of what they all look like. Um, yeah, we stair stepped the facade in compliance with the Girdwood Land Use Regulations. Uh, these, these buildings are fully in full compliance with the Girdwood Land Use Regulations and their geometry. We have raked the primary roofs to the south to allow solar panels on the roof. Um, yeah, the solar panels won't be a part of the project, but, uh, we'll be providing conduit to, to, uh, to, from the roof down to the basement so that people can put in solar panels and easily put in inverters, et cetera, uh, if they want to do so later. Uh, next sheet, please. And these are just the, the drafted elevations. Uh, next sheet. And this is building A, which is the commercial building in the southeast corner of the property. This is its view from the northeast, which would be the view from the, uh, uh, residences across the street. Uh, we've purposely limited the amount of window openings in this corner. Uh, the, uh, to, to minimize the interaction between the neighbors and this building. Um, there's a, there's quite a bit of code requirements for how much glazing you have to put on street passages. It has to be fifty percent glazed. So, uh, that, that glazing is grouped more towards the south. Um, the, the, the two windows you see on this corner, one is an office window. And the other, well, they're both office windows on different levels. Um, if you, well, walk through the floor plans here, uh, real quick, uh, well, actually these are the, um, the drafted elevations. So the, uh, the east elevation, uh, is towards High Tower. Then, uh, the north elevation is, um, you know, towards the parking lot. And if you scroll up a little bit, and then the south elevation, which is the primary elevation, is the elevation that's towards the post office. Uh, and that's where all, uh, there, the majority of the public decks are. There's one small, uh, public deck on the east side on the second level, towards High Tower Road. Um, we had quite a bit of discussion last week with, uh, with a neighbor across the street. And we have proposed some, uh, action items to help remedy their concerns. Uh, and also Nate, uh, Nathan and Liz Ellis have talked to them in person, or at least via phone. Um, so we are working with them on their concerns. Um, uh, primarily it was noise coming off that deck. And, uh, so we are willing to reduce the deck, depth of the deck on the east side from twelve feet to eight feet and limit it, its opening time from eight A M to eight P M. Um, so let's go on to the next sheet, please. So this is the first floor plan. Um, zoom out there Kyle, thanks. The first floor is a coffee shop on the east end and a sandwich shop sort of in the middle. And then on the north end of the, or, or sorry, on the west end, uh, is the distillery. Uh, it's a micro distillery similar to Amalgga and Juno. Um, or, or, uh, I think it's Chilkat Distillery in Haynes, uh, pretty small, low key operations. Um, the still is in the very, uh, point of the building at the top, at the page up. Uh, next sheet, please. This is the, the second, uh, story. Uh, page down, which is east, is a multi-purpose room. And then, uh, uh, to the west, which is page up, is the distillery tasting room. Uh, and then an overlook down into the still below at the, at the glazed end of the building. Um, Liz, I, I believe you wanted to talk a little bit more about what your vision was for this community room. Is that correct?
Hi, this is Liz Ellis. Um, yes, I just wanted to kind of clarify the space, the gathering space that will be created. Um, I think just as I have been doing a lot of events and just community involvement and stuff, I felt that there was hardly any space to come around as um, a collective. And I thought this would be a, a good opportunity to create something like that. Uh, I, I hear that there was some mixed thoughts on this. It's not more of a music event space. It's more of a gathering space, a community venue that could be rented out. Um, just like as some ideas that people can have in mind that I thought you guys can just hear from me. Um, just for, uh, fundraisers, cooking classes, there'll be like a, a mini built in kitchen there. Um, pop up events, movie nights, just even the overflow sometimes from the distillery, talks, meetings, lectures. Um, this is just a space for even to coming on a rainy day. Um, it's not necessarily for weddings. It's not necessarily for having music and having loud noise, which I don't want for the complaint purposes. Um, so that's kind of where I was going with the space, especially as an artist. I want somewhere here in Girdwood that I could, you know, showcase art. And I have many artist friends that can do the same thing. And it would be great even in the winter time just to have, you know, just to bring community together. So just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you Liz. And to follow up with a little bit with that, uh, I, I think it was maybe a misperception that we were planning, uh, this to be a party space. It, it's not that. It's, um, like Liz said, it's more for a community events. Uh, we could have business retreats there. Uh, it's, uh, the intent is to have something a, a little more low key than, um, something, uh, you know, uh, something that you might, that might take place, um, say at the hotel. Um, yeah, this is not that kind of space. Uh, the whole building is intended to be uh, kind of a, 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 a low key mellow experience. Uh, I was down in the Amalgga Distillery in Ju, in Juno. And, um, the clientele there were, were, you know, that was, uh, about the quietest, uh, almost contemplative setting that I had been in, in a while in a, in a kind of a public restaurant. Anyway, go to the next sheet, please. That might be it. Uh, those are the, uh, the drafted elevations and, uh, what you see in the, in the rendering up in the upper, uh, right corner is the point of the building with the still in it. And we, uh, made this point, uh, uh, see through it. It, it's, uh, pretty dramatic in the computer model. Unfortunately, I can't show the computer model via Teams because it kills the connection. But, um, the end of the building is very narrow. It's glazed. You can see through it. You can see the, the, um, the mechanics of the distillery, uh, and that when you're in the, um, uh, post office parking lot, again, you can see right through to the other parking lot. So it's, um, it's a way of making the building, uh, feel smaller at that end than, uh, than its actual length. So I think that's it for the drawings. Uh, so yeah, here's the drafted elevations, which are just a requirement of the, the application packet. Uh, this last sheet is the, uh, sections. I threw this in here uh, because we're requesting that the roof overhangs on the, what is the left hand side, which is the south side of the building. We allow, be allowed to have them overhang four feet rather than, than two feet, uh, mostly for pedestrian protection to the, uh, outdoor, um, patios below. Uh, and, uh, with that, I will, uh, go into my next section of presentation, which is a quick discussion of the permitting and why we're doing a development master plan. Um,
Marco, I think we had a comment in the comments.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Uh, what I'll do is, um, can we, can we go through the next part and then we'll do, take questions at the end, please?
Okay. So we have elected to complete a development master plan for the project, which is a Girdwood specific permitting process. It allows us to create a clearly articulated vision using site oriented design standards. The development master plan requires us to establish specific circulation systems, specific land uses, site dimension standards, as well as design development and building design standards. The intent of this process is for master planned areas to reflect the character of Girdwood and result in a development meeting or exceeding the regular standards of, uh, the Girdwood Land Use Regulations in Chapter nine. So as described in the application documents, we are proposing a number of design alternative, alternatives exceeding what is in code. The first design alternative is to develop the property using a, a horizontal mixed use rather than a, um, vertically stacked mixed use. So the horizontal mixed use is the residential areas near to California Creek, the commercial areas near to High Tower Road, rather than what is in code, which is to have the residential uses of, only. Uh, we, that, um, part of the code was crafted mainly around smaller lots in the G C seven area. Uh, this lot in the G C eight is much larger and it allows us to put the residential units near California Creek, which is a much nicer place to live. Um, you have California Creek as your backyard, you're away from High Tower Road. You're not sandwiched in between High Tower Road and a parking lot. Um, the remaining design alternatives we are looking at relate to the horizontal mixed use layout as well as enhancing pedestrian protection from the weather and sliding, uh, sliding snow. So these are, uh, covered walkways are required at the street pace of all new commercial buildings, but will not be required. but will not be required at the face of the residential buildings since they are remote from the street. We don't want public walkways crossing in front of the townhouses. Again, as I noted before, we'd like to be allowed deeper roof hang overhangs in the south setback and increase from two feet to four feet to allow for pedestrian protection to access the, um, the out, uh, south-facing, uh, uh, patios on Building A. Uh, the third design alternative is, uh, requiring minimum sixteen-foot and maximum six, twenty-foot front yard setbacks for the commercial buildings, but not for the residential buildings because they are, uh, away from Hightower Road. Um, we do have one wall on Building A, which exceeds forty-two feet. But, uh, we are requesting that this be allowed, um, since it is a wall that faces away from the street and it is in the, how, it includes the narrow part of the building that has the still in it. So the solid wall is forty-two feet, but all the building beyond that length has, uh, glass on both walls and it has a see-through effect. So we're doing what is desired by code. We're fault, doing the code intent, but in a much more architecturally interesting, uh, way, which, um, it's unfortunate that we can't show the, uh, computer model and spin it around because it's, it's quite dramatic and it, and it's, uh, uh, and, and architecturally, it's, it's quite nice. And then the final, um, uh, design alternative is to, uh, do shallower pitched roofs, um, than Chapter Nine, uh, suggests, which, uh, Chapter Nine suggests eight, twelve to twelve, twelve pitched roofs. Um, we are proposing two twelve pitched roofs, or, which are very similar to what has been constructed on the clinic right now. Uh, primarily, we want to do that to, um, uh, for snow safety, uh, with, with the larger building, uh, steep roofs. Uh, we would have a significant, um, snow shedding issues uh, that are, are pedestrian hazard. And, and as it exists now, uh, our shallow pitched roofs all shed away from, um, uh, they don't shed towards any streets. They shed away from any walkways. The one roof that does shed towards the parking lot has a canopy below it to catch any rain or, or falling snow. And we'll be, uh, putting, uh, non-sliding material on the roof so that the, the, we intend the snow to stay on the roof. Um, we presented the project to the Girdwood Land Use Committee last week, as well as, you know, we had a community meeting the month before. Uh, the, most comments have been favorable. In fact, almost all comments were favorable with the exception of the, um, the, the east deck on Building A. And in this rendering that you see, the east deck is, uh, to the right, uh, towards Hightower Road. And the concern was that, uh, there would be, you know, noise from weddings or, or et cetera, uh, uh, that, that could impact the residences across Hightower Road. And as I noted, we, uh, had further communication with the, with the neighbor. Um, and we have agreed to reduce the depth of that deck as well as limit it, its opening hours from eight AM to twelve, or to eight AM to eight PM. And, uh, and that is my presentation at this point. Uh, and I'll take questions now, please.
Thank you very much, Marco. Um, so first of all, I'll go to the board. Are there any questions from the board? Brianna?
Thank you. I did have one that I think has been asked before, so I just wanted to review. If there, for the residential buildings, will there be any provisions for Girdwood residents or to-be Girdwood residents, like preferential?
Hi, Brianna. It's Nathan. Um, good question. Um, we're actually kind of, this is kind of organically happening. It's pretty cool. Um, and large majority of the people that have contacted me are people that work here and they're looking for a place to live. And, um, you know, we don't have, uh, we're, we're not at a spot where we can sell these, uh, homes yet. But, uh, we're definitely letting these people know that, um, they're first in line with those options. So I guess your answer is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Brianna and then Guy.
Okay, I had one other quick one, I think, was also asked, just to clarify. The short-term rental and if there was any revision on the response from that in the, in the packet here.
Yeah, again, that's, uh, you know, something that we've discussed. And I know the entire town of Girdwood has discussed it, uh, at length. And, uh, we don't have a resolution for that. And we don't have, uh, any immediate plans of restricting, uh, somebody that owns a piece of property. Now, if the community of Girdwood comes forward and they, um, and they have a resolution to control short-term rentals, then yeah, of course, th- this would, uh, fall within the jurisdiction of that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Guy, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for your presentation. Um, just, I, I, I believe this is the case, but this was originally zoned for this purpose, right? You're not asking for a variant on, on this?
Uh, this is, uh, zoned for a mixed-use development. So what, uh, we're not asking for any variances. Uh, the, the, the businesses, all the businesses are, uh, the zoning district allows, the residences, the zoning district allows. What we're, what the development master plan is suggest, is suggesting is, uh, different geometry to how those would go together. Um, the, I, I could go on and on about the intent of the zoning district. But what, what is intended in this zoning district is to have continuous development along Hightower Road uh, with, uh, commercial on the first floor and residential above with parking behind. That's, that's the intent. And we could, uh, get a use-by-right land use permit for that geometry now. If our, uh, if our commercial, uh, buildings, uh, uses were under a certain square footage, uh, two thousand square feet, um, without a public process. And then two thousand, actually under four thousand, we could get an administrative site plan review with no public comment. Um, so what we're doing, we think fits the site better, um, allows for some public input and puts the residential units in a, in a much nicer part of the site. So, uh, but we're, what we're doing is, uh, revising the, the suggested geometry in the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I have one quick question, a technical question. So, um, in some of the earlier plans, and then you said the outline concepts, there was another commercial building on the north side of the lot in the, um, on this image in the, to the upper right-hand corner that's currently covered in grass. Um, if that building is built, does it, is it subject to the same, um, sort of general restrictions that, uh, are the, uh, the development changes that you're proposing for this? So is it also allowed to have very long walls and, um, you know, conform to the, uh, setbacks and walkway conditions and things like that? Or did that, would it have to go through another process once natural design is in place?
Uh, Mike, it would have to, uh, conform to the development master plan standard. And, and again,
Okay.
All, all the, uh, all the walls on Building A, um, conform to the underlying, uh, zoning district regulations, with the exception of the angled wall that's to the, um, left in this rendering. And we're, uh, the other building, uh, is, it wouldn't be large enough to, uh, have any walls that, uh, that would be not in compliance with the, with the zoning district. Um, yeah, so, uh, essentially, Building A in a, in, by itself, uh, the, the footprint geometry meets the, uh, the standards in the district. And that other building would as well.
Okay, so the issues, but the issues about, um, you know, overhang, et cetera, would be reflected or, well, could be reflected in the other building as well. So there'd be a similar look and style to that, probably.
Ye- yes, that's correct. We would be able to have lower roof, uh, uh, roof angles. Uh, we would be able to have deeper overhangs, um, for pedestrian protection if we wanted to. Um, uh, which we'd likely want to do anyway. Uh, what we're trying to do is, you know, these, these, um, land use regulations weren't necessarily crafted by people who lived in Girdwood. They're outside consultants, uh, Sherry Doorward out of Colorado. Um, and there, uh, these same regulations, uh, this same consultant team helped with the design of Whistler Village, which has, uh, exceptional, uh, snow avalanche problems off of steep roofs. And we, we want to avoid that with this project.
Okay, understood. Thanks. Um, I think, Guy, you still have your hand up from before? Or is that a new request? Okay, thanks. Um, I did see Rory. I don't know if your hand got tired, Rory. But if you want to go ahead, you can. If not, um, go ahead, Mike Star.
Um, I, I lowered my hand. I, I answered my own question, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Rory. Mike Star, do you want to go ahead? We're not hearing you if you are speaking.
Guess I better turn, I better turn my mic on, huh? Is that a little better?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, I guess I do can, want to continue a little bit of the follow-up on the east side deck. And, um, I do appreciate that, uh, that they're looking now to limit the use of that deck from eight AM to, to no later than eight PM. I guess at this point is that, uh, how is that usage going to be enforced in practicality? And is the entire commercial building going to close at eight PM?
Hey, Mike, um, so, no, the building will not close at eight PM. Um, I think to limit its use like that is, uh, it, well, it's pretty limiting for somebody that's trying to run a business, uh, especially with, uh, trying to stay flexible and not closing any doors, right? But what we can say is the usage of that deck can easily be limited at eight PM. And that's in.
And how are we going to do, and how are we going to do that? And who's going to enforce it?
Well, this is our, our business and, you know, there is locks that we can use on doors. The idea is to, we have an amazing view. Um, and just to utilize that, I, I personally thought it would be a really nice idea to have that rather than having a huge wall that's not being utilized, um, on this facing deck. Um, I personally think like taking photos throughout, through tourist season, you know, summer and winter would be a good idea because it is facing towards Elieska Mountain. And, you know, this venue space will be definitely managed. And there is locks on the door, but I'm not going to take the deck away and not have, you know, I want to use, I want to use the nature and utilize the space by looking outside too. So, um, the idea is not for like hanging out the whole time. The idea is to go out and yeah, to take a look at what we have outside in this beautiful area that we have.
Okay, yeah, interesting comment. I agree. There was also some discussion about the landscaping and leaving the trees that are already along Hightower Road where they are. So that's a pretty good buffer at certain times of the year, especially of any view off of the deck. So, okay. Next question has to do with the windows that are on the east side of the building. And the question is, is are these windows that can be opened in any, in any fashion?
Uh, tip, typically with like a, a lower, a lower-level commercial windows, they won't be opened. Um, the ventilation can come through, uh, the, the side doors, the side decks. And so if they are open, I believe it'd probably be, uh, some small windows below. However, for security measures and whatnot, it's, they're usually pretty sealed up.
Yeah, Mike, this is Marco. I can back that up. We, uh, the intent for this building, we have a mechanical penthouse. It'll be fully mechanically ventilated. We have quite a few opening doors on the south side. Um, it, it typically, commercial buildings, um, you know, it's nice to have natural ventilation, um, just for, you know, the worker's health and, and, and stuff. But, uh, that's not what you depend on. You can't get enough, uh, window opening area to, to generate code-required ventilation. So this will be a mechanically ventilated building. I don't see any reason to have opening windows on, on that side. Um, or, you know, or any opening windows at all in the building, um, with the amount of opening doors we have on those south, uh, patios.
All right. I mean, that was, that was really a noise-related question. Simply if, uh, hey, if we're going to limit the availability of the deck and keep the door closed at eight PM, opening the windows would be another conduit to noise, once again, impacting the residents across the street.
Yeah, typically, you know, the opening windows kind of mess with your ventilation system. So, um, that's, you know, some, some clients will want that in, in certain, uh, certain types of spaces, but, um, I'm not seeing that in this particular, uh, building for its uses.
So then, so then the builder, they're agreeing that the, the windows won't be able to open on the, on the east side then?
Yeah, I don't see any, I mean, that's u- ultimately a client-driven, uh, request. So I'll turn that back over to Nathan. I don't see any reason why they should be opening.
Yeah, again, Mike, we didn't have any, uh, plans for those lower windows to be open just for the ventilation aspect of it. Um, uh, but again, I mean, that's, that's quite a ways down the road for us. Uh, this is a multi-phase project. And so, I mean, realistically, this commercial building won't be built for two years. So, uh, there's a lot of details that we still need to work out, and that is one of those details. Um, but, uh, if you ask me to jump forward two years and make a decision on it, um, my inclination would be that they would be sealed windows.
Well, I guess, I mean, that's, I just, I don't know. This may be one of the few times I have an opportunity to provide comments and ask questions about this. So I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, that it's clear on what we're talking about here.
Yeah, uh, also, I mean, Mike, and, and your questions are very well taken. And that's why we have these forums to get neighbor concerns. Um, and so that we can, uh, build it into the, um, into the building design. And just, you know, I, I know you're looking for assurances, but, you know, rest assured that, uh, the Ellis's and myself, uh, live in Girdwood. And the last thing we really want to do is upset neighbors. Um, that's, that's very low on our priority list.
Well, I, yeah, and once again, I appreciate that. And I've said before, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm supportive of, of the concept of what we're going forward here. But at the same time, I just want to make sure that we're preserving the quality of life that the residents across the street enjoy right now. So let's talk a little bit about the lower.
So actually, before, if, if, before you go any further, Mike, I, I just want to make sure the focus of this meeting stays on, uh, the discussion we're having, which is the, um, the development master plan and the changes from existing code. I mean, we, we can obviously debate for a long while about, um, you know, the lot is commercial and there are commercial, um, you know, there could be various commercial developments on that lot. We really should be keeping the focus on, uh, the changes from code that are being, or effectively the changes from code which are being proposed in the development master plan. So if you could keep, keep to that topic, I'd appreciate it. And there will be other.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly where that line goes. I mean, but, um, you're, if you're looking at the commercial development we have here right now is being proposed on it, it looks like, you know, some of the things that have been talked about here recently, um, around the deck and the, the closure of the deck and the windows and those kind of things, they're just important things to take care of because, you know, once again, this is a commercial, commercial site. I think we recognize that. But right across the street is a residential site too. And there are, you know, uh, anchorage noise ordinances that, you know, limit the amount of noise that can come off of a commercial site to a residential site. So, and if we're going to make some discussion here about what this plan is going to be about and the use of it, I don't think we can move it forward unless we can, with some degree of confidence, state that this is. state that this is not going to negatively impact the, the noise limitations afforded to the residential across the street. I mean, this deck is 100 feet or thereabouts from the property line, from the residential property line. It doesn't take too much noise to impact and exceed what the noise standards of Anchorage say for that residential property. So if we don't have some assurances that the noise is really going to be controlled through the events, through the closure of doors, windows, whatever mitigation is out there, then, you know, we've got a real issue here. And I don't think that, unless we've got that confidence, that this project can really go forward. So that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, and that's my concern. And
Okay, thank you.
I mean, those, those were the ones, and once again, I mean, I have similar questions about the space downstairs. There's a, there's a, it's not shown as a deck, but there's obviously a walkway and an adjacent patio area. And who's to say that that doesn't turn into outdoor space? It very easily could. I mean, there's no restrictions about placing tables and chairs out there and letting people gather, do whatever they want. But, you know, it's not shown as a proposal for that. And we can talk about the specific measures that they've done on the building or want to do on the building. But what if the building itself changes? And maybe they end up not building this building, they end up building a three-story building or a one-story building or, you know? Will, will any of those kind of things come back to the public to have an opportunity to have comment?
From a process point of view, I mean, if, in general, if something is, if there's a commercially zoned lot and a commercial development is put on there which falls within code and doesn't require any variances and doesn't require any change from existing process, it does not have to go through conditional process in public. But the same is, you know, when you, if you build a, if you build a house on your own lot, you typically don't have to go through a public process to do so. That's my understanding. As far as noise is concerned, can, could one of the, either Marco or one of the owners actually speak to whether you intend to follow the noise ordinances with an Anchorage code?
Yeah, of course. I mean, we're, we're bound by the noise, or within the municipality of Anchorage. Of course, we're bound by our noise ordinances. And we're not building a nightclub or a bar, or, nor did we intend to have those types of two o'clock in the morning parties that you would see over at Chair Five spilling out onto the street. Although that's about a stone's throw away. This is going to be a craft distillery, and by state law, it closes at eight o'clock. And that is the basis of your nighttime usage for this. Other than that, it's a coffee eatery, and that's mostly in the morning and for lunchtime, not even open for dinner. And just to reiterate kind of what Mike said, this is a commercial lot. And there are, last time I checked, there is very, very few lots available in downtown Gerwood. And this is one of them. So I know that our concerns are very much in line with yours, Mike, that you live across the street. We want to, we don't want to make the neighbors mad, trust me. But we also have opportunities and we don't want to close doors right now for like in this community space that, like Liz was talking about, that we're imagining. So my assurance is that the deck will close at eight o'clock. And we limited its size, we're keeping all the vegetation in front of it, all the natural trees. And there's some really nice big cottonwood trees that were, I would like to keep them all. So those are my assurances to you. And that's all I have.
And Mike, if you can, if I may respond to another of Mike's comments about the covered walkway on the first level, that's actually a code requirement in the GCA zoning district, as well as the GC seven zoning district. A continuous covered arcade attached to the building on the street side of any facade is, is a district requirement. And we are not asking that this building be relieved of that requirement. We, we are asking that, that not be a requirement on the townhouses because it wouldn't make much sense over there. But you know, we, we are designing this building footprint largely to the zoning district requirement. And, and again, I do want to point out that the, you know, we could be building up to a 4,000 square foot bar arranged along Hightower Road with no public input as it, with administrative site plan review only, which was done at the planning department. So we are kind of going above and beyond with the Ellis's doing this development master plan process. I mean, we have, we have our motives because we, we don't want to have to build the residences right on the street either. But you know, just to, to put the big picture out there, you know, this, the city would like to see a much more impactful development, a development that's much more impactful to the neighbors across the street than what we're proposing.
Thank you, everybody. I think we've had a fairly robust discussion. Kyle, I see your hand up. Is that, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I a question and a comment. Somebody asked me about this, and I know the answer, but I'd like for Marco or the Ellis's to state it. Snow storage, the site should hold its own snow storage the way it's designed. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. We exceed the amount of required snow storage by about 1,000 square feet, what we have designated.
Okay. And then with the landscape plan, I think it's a pretty good idea there with the gabion baskets working as a curb line in that aspect. Just my comment to the future development is to mark those gabion baskets really well because loader buckets easily snag on the things, especially when those guys are moving fairly quick. But that's, it's an interesting way to drain the parking lot for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. From a process point of view, I think we may be approaching one hour of this discussion. I unfortunately do not have a note of when we started. I don't know if Kyle, you were able to do so.
I don't have that, no.
Okay. Just for procedure, it would be useful if somebody, if somebody, if member of the board could just allow our discussion to go on a little bit longer.
This is Brianna. I move that we continue discussion for 10 more minutes.
We hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Guy. Let's do this by voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, so we'll continue discussion for a little bit longer. Sorry to interrupt. The Paul and or Cindy Wilson, have your hand up? Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Cindy Wilson. We live across in Snow Raven, across from Hightower Road. And I have talked to Mike about the, to mitigate some of the sound that might, this commercial building might produce. And it is a concern of mine. And I hope that you can apply all the regulations that you have said, especially trying to close it at 8:00 PM. I, I don't know whether this should be rented out or actually used for, you know, for weddings and bands inside. But there is a concern of the, the sounds that might, it might produce. The other concern is the lighting. I like the fact that you want to keep low lighting. I noticed there's this whole space from the, I think the post office on that isn't lit on the roadside. I always found that kind of curious. It doesn't, the lighting is like absent until you finally get to the school. So I guess they're assuming that they're going to put lights all the way down the street. Is that correct?
This is Marco. We have been in discussions with the city. Traffic has suggested that we light Hightower Road as part of this project, at least to the corner of, to the northeast corner. We do not want to do that. We, you know, not only, well, quite frankly, there's an expense to it, to putting in those tall light poles that reach out to the middle of Hightower Road. And also, we do not think that the neighbors across the street would like that very much, to have lights suddenly shining in their windows. So in our land use committee meeting, we requested community input and comment to be directed to the planning department to, for the neighbors to, for the neighbors to let the planning department know that they do not want Hightower Road lit along the, the length of this development.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information. One other curiosity, I find that inspections from, for the codes for Atlant, we're under the auspices, I guess, the mechanical codes for Anchorage, the city of Anchorage, are we not?
So we are not in the building safety district. The building safety district is, is where the, the city of Anchorage reviews the plans and then inspects the buildings as they get constructed. We're in a land use permit district, which, a land use permit, that just makes sure that your building complies with zoning or the planning department process, which we are going through now. We are under the auspices of the Alaska State Fire Marshal for a building, a building safety review.
I see. Okay, so that, that you apply for a permit, but after you've, you've put in your sewer lines and, and the water authority inspects that above the ground, then you have your permits, but the inspector doesn't necessarily have to come out and inspect all electrical and mechanical plumbing, et cetera? That doesn't have to be done then?
No, that's, that is, the city inspectors do not inspect outside of the building safety districts. Gerwood, parts of the hillside, Eagle River are not in the building safety district.
Okay.
That it gets deferred to the Alaska State Fire Marshal, and they approve the plans. But the state fire marshal does not inspect, do building construction inspections. They may inspect it after it's done to make sure it complies with plans or it was built according to plans. But the, basically, we have licensed mechanical, electrical engineers do the design. And the liability for the building falls, building performance falls on the mechanical, electrical engineers, as well as myself, the architect and the civil engineer, which actually is a fire bar.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information.
Thank you. So I don't see any further questions. So what we would traditionally have done is read the resolution into the record, but we've already produced the resolution. It's in the packet. I would be happy if, rather than go through the formality of reading it, someone would like to propose the resolution as a motion. Margaret, you had a, you have a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that Marco provided an edit to the one that I invited you. So maybe we should look at that one. It's in a second packet that I just posted this evening because I had just received it.
Is that the one that's on the screen?
Scroll. Kyle, is that the one that's on the screen?
Yes, it is.
Oh, great. Super. Sorry about that.
Could you just?
Who are looking for it, you'll see it in an auxiliary packet that's currently online.
Marco, could you just comment on the change from the one that was published on Friday?
I just re-articulated the standards that we were providing revised design standards for and articulated it, and then also commented, I put a whereas stating that we reduce the deck, deck depth to eight feet and limited the the opening times from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's the second to the last paragraph.
Thank you. So again, I'd entertain a motion from board member to to make this motion, the resolution as a motion. Brianna?
This is Brianna. I would move to support the proposed development master plan for Glacier City Center with the edits by Marco.
Thank you. Would anyone like to second?
I'll second. Jennifer?
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Any further discussion on the, of the resolution or the, or the topic, really? So primarily, we're, primarily, we're discussing the, the changes for the development master plan. So the changes to code. I mean, this, I will just comment briefly then. This has been discussed fairly extensively over multiple meetings. And I think the, I understand why the biggest change to, to me is the difference is moving from horizontal to a, from a vertical to a horizontal mixed use, which I agree is not the way that the code is written, but I think it is, does seem appropriate for this site. So I will be voting in favor of this. Any other comments from the board? If not, we can move on to a vote of the motion. Okay, Kyle, could you take this as roll call, please?
Yes. Mike Eddington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy? Lost Amanda, so that motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Thank you very much to everybody who participated in this and took part in the discussion as well. Much appreciated. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, which is an update on the October 2021 storm and the financial discussion, particularly status of the emergency declaration and funding requirements.
Yeah, so I'll take this, the status of emergency declaration. So this is in response to the, what we call the Halloween weekend storm event, which caused flooding and damage throughout town on four roads, in particular Crystal Mountain, Echo Ridge, Loveland and Ruane, with the most significant damage being on Ruane Road. The state did grant, the governor did grant a, including Gerwood in the emergency declaration. That was amendment and added in. And so we are recognized by the state for having an emergency situation, which now opens up reimbursement funding from the state for the expenses that took us to make those repairs. We completed those repairs over a process of about two weeks. And so we will start that process with, and we're in the phase of what we call recovery of funds. And this will be the more arguest part of the deal where we have to deal with the state, get them everything they need. We have a very good set of documents to them already, but we know that they'll have more questions as we go. We were not included in the request for emergency declaration to FEMA, to the federal government. And that had to do with the fact that we are part of Anchorage. And at this point, our reimbursement costs are only totaling $433,000. And when you compare that cost against our population, the ratios or the formula that they use, we would not qualify. But what they would like to do is to see if the state, if the feds do grant that declaration, if the president does, and at that point amend in because they can do a better explanation of how Gerwood is separate from the whole of the municipality as a service area. And that our costs overall, which would include the Ruane permit replacement of a new culvert, would add up to about $2 million, maybe $2.5 million, depending on the, the design for that new culvert, the fish passage that would go in. So we will see that. But in, in the, in the short term, it is good that we have the decoration from the stakes that will help us to get reimbursement. We don't know what, how much that reimbursement is going for. We're hoping for all. But it's, it's unclear at this point what, what that'll be. It just depends on how we go through the process with them. But like we said, we have everything in line from our narrative to our documents to our reimbursements. So we're working through that. First quarter revisions, we will have more information on this as we move into February. We'll have a better standing of where our current emergency fund stands and what amount of reimbursement we have to do there. So we will do that. And then any other revisions outside of our road budget that we need that we need to consider, like, for example, the seat, the consumer price index, you know, inflation has gone up significantly. So we're looking at an increase with our contract with Whittier as as laid out in the contract. So we will be addressing that and we'll bring that forward to the board. And then the long term solutions for Ruane is is a box culvert that is fish passage and meets the need of protecting the sewer pipe as well. And so as we've discussed in the past, that's a fix of 1.5 to $2 million based on recent projects that have happened in Anchorage of similar type. And so we're pushing forward on that. We do have the post-construction, post-repair construction survey done. And we have that in hand and soon as we know more. One thing about it, most recently, is the mayor put forward as a priority project to the state for infrastructure funding is the Ruane repair because it provides a critical link to our treatment plant, our industrial park and our waste transfer station. So that was a top of their list of there just behind the port. So we're happy to see that. And also a request for the culvert replacement on Mount Hood. And there was one other project, oh, a bridge replacement at the top of Crow Creek Road that connects you to the pass there. So we were happy to see at least three projects included that there. Were not a lot of projects. There was a total maybe of eight, and three of them were from Gerwood. So we hope that goes forward, that aspect. So that's where we stand on all that at this point.
Thank you. Can you just remind us what work we are still planning to do in the spring?
Well, the spring?
After the third breakout.
Correct. So when we get full meltout, we still we still have to finish the surfacing of Ruane. It is basically gravel. When we left it, we got luckily got a layer of recycled asphalt on there, but then it snowed and froze that day almost. And then we have quite a bit of armoring to finish on culverts and drainage projects all over town that we just we were able to put everything away quickly and then it snowed. So and then we'll have to assess everything when we get a clean look at it because everything was really muddy and soaked and in combination of snow as we were being forced out of the projects. So we know we have two culverts still replaced on the drainage coming off Echo and several other items. So we'll be working through that in the spring. So we're estimating probably somewhere between $50,000 to $100,000 worth of work there. And then we have to haul off all the unusable material that we have stockpiled in the yard and culvert pipes that were damaged and recycle those. So all that has to be hauled to Anchorage. So quite a bit of work to finish in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, I have a couple of quick follow ups. One comment is, do we have a do you have, we do not have an estimate yet of how much of the emergency fund we're going to expend? Or do you have a minimum number or maximum number just to get a ballpark figure now?
I would say that of the emergency fund, just a ballpark number, so far, our totals are 433,000 that we've spent so far. We had a grant for a bridge in in Culver Bear. I think that was about 140,000. And so we pulled out undesigned 200,000. So right now, I think we're somewhere between the 150 to $200,000 mark that we've used out of the emergency fund. But I will have a better sense of that once we finish our paying our bills. So.
Okay, and we have approximately until the end of February to do first quarter revisions. Is that correct?
We can do it into March, too. But the the Assembly will not approve the first quarter revisions until after the general election in April. It's usually the first action of the new assembly. So so we'll be working through it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are any other questions from the board or the public, any questions from the public or community? Okay, let's move on to, thank you very much, Kyle. And obviously, we'll discuss that again more next month when we have more clarity. We will move on to item number seven, review and vote on proposed changes to GBS rules and procedures to allow virtual hybrid or in-person meetings regardless of public health emergency status. Jennifer, do you want to take this?
Yeah, I think I can be quick. This is the changes are listed in the meeting packet. While I lobbied for this, I can't claim any credit for the wording. Thanks, many thanks to Margaret for modifying what the Assembly ended up managing. So what we're doing is bringing our wording in line with changes that the Assembly made and also giving ourselves the ability to choose how we meet in the future. Just I know I've said it before, but I'll say it again. We're not deciding how we meet in the future. We're just giving ourselves the freedom to decide it for ourselves rather than having it be dictated as in person unless there's a public health emergency. So you can see the changes, as I said, on the packet, and I think they're pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Jennifer?
Sorry, one other thing. I forgot to address that I had recommended getting rid of that word remotely, but I changed my mind about it. So anyway, we don't have to address that at all.
Okay. So I don't see any other questions. I do have one. If I can, a good way of phrasing this, the one of the things, one of the things I recall in the, when there was discussion at the unit at the Anchorage Assembly level, was a point one of the attorneys made that if anybody is participating not in person, then there must be a live streaming option for every for the whole community. So that implied a change for how we've done things in the past and how a lot of boards seem to do things. This is the implication was that if basically if one if one board member calls in, then it must be sort of available live to to anyone who wants to communicate. And I'm not sure what the what exact language is that ended up in the in the ordinance. Do we have, do you have a, is there any comment in, is there any language in there that addresses that issue?
I think that might be D.
I think D was the other sense of if everyone, if anyone was in person, then the public must be allowed in person. This was the other, the other sense. So if any member was not present in person, then the public must be allowed to take part or must be allowed to listen live effectively. And that's not something that we've always done in the past. I'm not seeing any language that affects. So this is something that came up in discussion at the at the Assembly. But if we're taking the language which the Assembly adopted, then that must have been resolved at the Assembly level. So I don't have any more concerns. Okay, any other comments from the Brianna? And I saw Guy's hand earlier as well. Go ahead, Brianna.
Oh, Guy can go ahead. I saw his hand up.
Guy?
I think I answered my own question. So I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Brianna?
Okay, I would like to move that we approve the rules and changes to the rules and procedures presented.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
This is Guy. I'll second that.
Thank you, Guy. Any further discussion? I see your hand up still, Brianna. Is that from earlier? Or do you have additional comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands, so I think we can move on to a vote. Can you do a roll call, please, Kyle?
Yes. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
A motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work, Jennifer and Margaret. We will now move on to item number eight, discuss agenda for MOA GBS quarterly meeting scheduled for January the 24th at 4:00 PM. We will be doing this via Teams. I see in the agenda, it says Teams TBA, but my understanding is it is it is definitely on Teams. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Yeah, there are several items that have already been considered for the for the meeting. Okay. Let's see, is there any anything missing? I'll ask the board members first if there's any comments or you'd like to make, and then we'll go to Michelle. I think we need to discuss, I would say that, yeah, I'm going to comment myself. I think we do need to discuss the, we absolutely need to discuss the residential 2021 project and the industrial park. Is there anything else that we need to discuss from HLB? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Michelle? Please go ahead.
Okay, just I am going to be away for this meeting. So the issue with the fire department contract is just to remember this, that they don't want to give, they want us to sign a contract that doesn't have a value amount. And we, as a contract negotiation group, want to sign a contract that has a value in it because it's not usual to have it to not sign, sign a contract that doesn't have a value in it. Anyway, that's the big issue. That's the holdup. Thank you for carrying the water since I will be here.
Okay, will there be anybody from the from the fire department board available? Michelle, do you know?
Michelle, you mute time.
I think we're I think she may not be able to. Are you there, Michelle? The reason, the reason we're asking this, the reason I'm asking this is because, you know, as GBS members, we're responsible for, or we represent the people receiving the service and paying for the service, but not actually the group or the nonprofits providing the service. And the contract is between, while we are very much interested and we have, we have a lot of skin in this game, we're not actually a signatory to the contract. So I think it would be extremely valuable to have a member of the fire department board or the chief or a member of the chief's immediate staff present to speak to that and represent the fire department itself. It looks like we may have lost Chief Weston. So actually, Guy, since the as the fire department representative, could you follow up with that, please?
Yes, definitely. Yep. I already made note of that. I agree with you, too. It would be nice to have a board member there.
Okay, are there any other, any other comments on the agenda? Anything else we need to add or we need to remove? Okay, so we don't need to take any action on this. Brianna, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. I was just going to agree with your recommendations for the HLV topics. So I think that it's all been said. And there's, I thought there was one person from the fire board on the call, but Guy can can do what he said he was going to do. That's all.
Thank you. We don't need to take any action on this. This will just go ahead as the agenda. Okay, so we will move on to item number nine. Gerwood Trails Committee Agenda Item LUC 211205, final presentation of concept plan for the bridge over Glacier Creek and a vote regarding GBS resolution and support for a suspension bridge to replace the hand tram over Glacier Creek. Kyle?
Yes. Tonight, we'd like to continue our discussion with GBS about the bridge proposal, the bridge concept proposal for replacing the hand tram at Winter Creek. And I asked for your support tonight from that. We've been through LUC, Gerwood Trails Committee and LUC and have gained support from them and we're presenting the same information. We just have in here, just to give you an idea, the new concept for the Alaska Long Trail. And that long trail would come through Gerwood and actually through that corridor. And this bridge would provide that connection of the Winter Creek as part of the connection going through the area. Let me downsize this. Okay. So with our partners at Anchorage Parks and Rec and our consultants at R and M, Benisworth North, we've come up with a concept design for a bridge, a suspension bridge, that is, to reconnect the Winter Creek trail at Glacier Creek and replace the hand tram, which previously served as the connection point between the two trails there. The concept design is meant to balance costs, functionality and aesthetics, and to provide basically Gerwood and its visitors a sustainable and year-round connection of the of the trail there and crossing of Glacier Creek. The initial concept is a galvanized steel bridge with a galvanized graded walkway about five feet wide that would cross the creek. The materials are meant to provide superior lifespan and very high durability in this rainforest that we live in and as well be something that would provide low maintenance and and use for many, many years. Other considerations that we have in here is fall protection and protection of the of the crossing by building a suitable bridge with fall protection nets and handrails and and sort of a guiding rail system that leads you on and off the bridge, plus a ramped approach on each side. The bridge would basically be built to would be built to ADA specs, understanding that this trail is is becoming more and more accessible to all types of users. And there's equipment out there that are allowing all types of users to get down this trail. So we definitely want to build for the future with that. As well, this project would include interpretive display, which would basically in trying the hand tram, we would take the hand tram itself and create a display repurposing the shelter covers from each of the terminals in each side. One of those terminal shelters would become the new interpretive display, which would have the hand tram in it, probably on a suspension cable like it is now, and interpretive language associated with it so that people can understand the history of the area and what was built there and what has preceded it now. Overall, we're optimistic that if we can get our designs done and get our engineering completed, that we could possibly, if we have the funding in place, go out to bid this spring, late winter, mid-spring, and hopefully go for a construction in '22. But we understand there's always things that come up. So realistic that we may need to push that to '23, depending on where we're at with funding and the ability to get a contractor who can do this for the price that we can afford. We estimate that the total cost, which includes the soft cost with engineering and design and project management, would be $1.2 million and that the interpretive shelter would probably be at a high end of $50,000 to use there in that aspect. We were, part of the project was to sort of be inspired by things here in the community that were exist. There are some of this. And if anything, the chairlifts of Alyeska represent a lot of what this facility would look like with its galvanized steel and cable structure that we find out there in that aspect, as well as sort of the decor of the area in Gerwood. These are concept drawings of the bridge, what they would look like. And they would be basically in the alignment of the bridge, of the hand tram itself now, with us reusing the abutments on each side that the hand tram uses right now for anchoring the cable that goes across that the hand tram rides on. We would remove the shelters as they would conflict with the building of the bridge and the cables and the upgrades of the suspension cables. So they would be removed and, like I said, repurposed for interpretive shelter. And an idea was to repurpose the other shelter into Lions Club Park, where there's been a request for a covered shelter there. So if we could repurpose it and use it that way, that'd be a great way to use both of the shelters again. The bridge itself is about 170 feet from abutment to abutment. And then it would extend with ramps on each side coming up and down from each side. The fall protection would be a minimum of 52. We did propose taking that cable fall We did propose taking that cable fall protection up to eighty-four. But we did hear a lot of feedback that it being that high would have obstructive views for those who are shorter and trying to get unobstructive views up and down the canyon and as well wind drag with having that up there at that height. So we are leaning towards the fifty-two inch height there with a handrail that would be on the inside of it as it goes across. So you can see here. And then there would be anchor blocks on each side. There was a question relating to how long those anchor blocks would go back. That, from the engineers, would really be flushed out through the geotech to confirm the location of where we anchor. We do know on the hotel side of the, what is, what is the east side? There's a lot of bedrock there, so we can tie into that bedrock. And it really depends on the final design of how tall those towers are. And, and if we go with a pre-made kit or we go with something custom, that will flush up, flush out through the full engineer design process. To give you some inspiration for it, or where we got inspiration for this project, this is a bridge in Europe. I believe it's in Switzerland. And it is a very similar design and look to what the bridge would look like. At this point in time, we're talking about arch bridge, but through design, it may be a bridge that looks more like this. And, but we, we definitely go with the full galvanized. We did propose using wood in the uprights, treated woods like telephone poles to give some contrast. But from feedback and, and personal preference for me, I like to go with something that's fully durable. And, and it will last for fifty to a hundred years, no problem. And so we're leaning towards a full galvanized buildout. The fall protection would be this stainless steel cable web net for bridge protection. And then we would have a handrail, stainless steel handrail or galvanized handrail on the inside that people can hold on to. And like I said, a grated metal walkway that allows for rain and moisture to fall through in that aspect. And then we would repurpose the old existing wire mesh panels out there. They're used for fall protection inside the terminals to use as approach railings. So as you're entering the, or entering the bridge, those mesh metal panels would sort of direct traffic right up into the bridge itself. So trying to reuse as much as we can out there with the existing infrastructure. We would definitely have to confirm that the concrete on the existing abutments is appropriate and safe to reuse. From our initial inspections, we do think it's been well maintained all these years through annual inspections and cleanings and protected by those shelters. So, so hopefully that we can reuse them, but they may need to be built on to increase the size. This just gives you a perspective of the existing terminals and how the bridge would play within those terminals. So this give you an aspect and you can see why we would have to remove the, the roof lines as they would conflict with the cables and support columns that go up on each side for, for the, for the main suspension cables. And then this gives you a perspective as you're walking up to it and how they conflict in there. So, so we wanted to make sure and show that as to why we were removing those structures. But hopefully find a good repurpose for them going forward. So what we are requesting today of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors is to support, is there support for this concept? And for us to move forward with a full design package and basically create something that we're fully ready to develop. As, as one of the things that we've been going through is that we've been closely working with the U S Forest Service. We had a meeting with them just after Christmas and with their engineering team. And they have shown positive support for this bridge. And and the concept that we're proposing. They have never built a suspension bridge of this type in Alaska. They have used it on other forests down the lower forty-eight even for vehicles to cross. And so they're open to the idea. And these bridges have proven to work here. The National Park Service Denali National Park actually built one over Riley Creek up there. And that's a full wood structure that they built there. And then the most recent buildout in Denali State Park has proven once again a very durable year-round crossing. So they're very open to it. They wanted to confirm that the community supported this. And, and if they did, they're willing to start working with us on the design aspect and come up with something that in the long run they're motivated to take over and maintain for the future. So we're working with them closely on that and as we go forward. So that's what we're looking for today. The other aspect about it is costs. And we're asking the G B O S to encumber five hundred and fifty thousand for this project. The municipality through area-wide funds has already encumbered about five hundred and twenty-five thousand for this project. That's what we're using for this initial design. And then the next design phase would be funded from that, that funding string. And this five hundred and fifty thousand that we're asking to come out of the Gerwood capital account would be used for construction. They still leave us short, so we would need to look for other sources of funding out there. And the Parks and Rec, Anchorage Parks and Rec has some ideas with the next tranche of money coming from the federal government for COVID relief. And then also the Senator Mikalski's office has shown, shown, strong support for it. And as well, the state of Alaska has shown strong support for it. So we are chasing up those flight polls and trying to track down the remaining money going forward. So that's all I have. Open up the questions.
But thanks, Kyle. Before we go any further, I should just point out, we, we actually have a, we will finish at ten o'clock unless we get an extension. So I'll entertain a motion to extend the meeting beyond ten.
So moved. This is Brianna.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Hold a second. This is Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. We can probably do this by voice. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. And anyone against? Okay, thank you. Thanks for the process. Let's move, move on to questions for, for Kyle or on this topic from the board. Was your hand up for a question, Brianna, or was that for the extension?
It was, it was not. It was for extension first.
Okay, thank you. Guy, please go ahead, Guy.
Hey, Kyle. Could you repeat me again, what? You said the estimated cost for design and buildout is one point five million. Is that correct?
One point two million.
One point two million. And after design, we'll get a, obviously a better handle on the, the true cost of, you know, a better estimate on the true cost of the buildout, correct?
Correct, yeah. We will go, we will finish the design probably to sixty-five or eighty-five percent. And then we'll send it to H M S, the professional estimators, and they will come up with final design costs.
And do you anticipate that cost influencing, at that point, will, the design will be done? So there probably won't be any changes to be made at that point to save cost if it's over what we're looking at?
I'm sure we can always make adjustments. It just depends on the, basically like maybe the level of expectations we have, especially working with U S Forest Service. We, you know, we don't want to short ourselves on safety and durability, so we would have to address that. If there's something looks like we can't, if there's an extra feature in there that we felt was a luxury, we could cut it out, we would do that. But if it's a safety aspect and it just really doesn't meet the snuff to cut it, then we would say, yeah, that's the realistic and we have to find more money to make it work.
Okay, I'm, yeah, you mentioned geotechnical and that's kind of always a big unknown until you really look at it closer, so.
Well, one thing is that we did, we, the service area did complete a feasibility study, so most of our geotechnical is done. We just have to confirm that as a part of the process, but remember, and you may not have seen the report, but the report is full of detail scientifically, so it, it, it does carry a lot of information. So that will help them quite a bit in their design work.
Right, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so, so the resolution in front of us doesn't say anything about cost. It just commits us to matching funds. I'm not comfortable about a resolution that commits us to spending money without a, at least a, you know, an indication of how much that is. And I'm also very unclear about where this five hundred and fifty thousand actually exists or where it exists. Obviously, we're, we're working on the, on the reimbursement of the emergency declaration money. So if we had five hundred and fifty lying around with no purpose, then it's, it would be difficult to, it's obviously a difficult argument to make that we're spending five hundred and fifty on this while at the same time trying to get reimbursement for the emergency funds. So I just want to understand a bit more about the, are we, what are we actually committing to by going ahead with this resolution and what is the plan for, the detailed plan for funding?
Sure. So what you're committing to is for us to go and complete a full design package.
Right.
And so that would be something that we could put on a bid document or a bid and put it out and get construction built. So that funding is not coming from the service area. That funding is coming from the area-wide funds that we've received through the ministry. So that will not be associated here. What I'm asking is for the service area to show commitment that they will provide funding for the building of the bridge once we get there. And where that funding is coming from is from the Gerwood Capital Parks and Rec account, which right now currently has six hundred and forty-seven, six hundred and forty thousand in it. And also, within this operating budget, there is a hundred and twenty-five thousand contribution that will go into it. So that's a total of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand that are set aside in our capital account for capital projects just like this. So the reduction, if we use the five hundred and fifty thousand, would still leave Gerwood with two hundred and fifteen thousand for other capital projects going forward in that aspect. As well, right now, our roads account has about, just reviewing it, we have about two hundred and sixty thousand within our roads account still available that we could use, we needed to, to move it over to our emergency fund in that aspect. So, so the questions about replenishing the emergency fund still need to be worked out as we're dealing with our expenses. But if, if we look to tap into Parks and Rec to redo that, then yes, that would be need to be a consideration. But as of right now, if we even encumbered the five hundred and fifty thousand for the building of the bridge, there's still estimated about four hundred and fifty thousand in capital that's not encumbered for any projects. So that could be reused right now to replenish everything that we've spent so far. But like we said, we have other sources of funding coming in and we hopefully see a reimbursement from the state.
Right.
Now, we are, we're, we are under a declaration of the state, so the rush to re replenish our emergency fund can be delayed as we work through that process. So it, it can be worked out in that aspect, but those things are playing themselves out as we move forward with that process.
Okay, and just to, just to go one level further, further on this. Although we have money allocated to the Parks Capital, Capital Fund, we're still able to move that around within the different capital funding streams, aren't we? So, you know, we could, if we, if we do not go down the path of committing the money to, to the bridge replacement or the hand tram replacement, we have the option of moving that to one of the other sources, including replenishing emergency funds. So we're not actually, we're not committed, although we've made past policy decisions to put that money into Parks Capital, we're not committed for it to stay there only forever. We can, we can still move that around, correct?
No, you can move it wherever you want, but you know, the way we've organized ourselves over the years is to create funds from different departments. So that's where we stand with that department fund this time.
Yeah, but the distinction, there's a distinction between having the money encumbered versus the money sitting in a capital account.
Well, like I said, nothing's encumbered at this time. They're just.
At the moment, yes, at the moment, but we would designate, we would designate or encumber if we go down this path. I'm just trying to, I'm just talking through it, trying to understand exactly what we're doing.
If you want to move money, if the board wanted to move money around, they could move it to different departments. Yes, it's very, it's very open. But we've always tried to be very clear about where we're keeping our capital accounts so we can build them up to complete projects.
Okay. Brianna.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Kyle, for that as well. So I was looking at the final therefore in the resolution and maybe, I don't know, would it be better to edit around the words commits to matching funding or leave it the way it is so that we can continue to move funds as needed? Because funding is plural and commits is plural, that it could be at different times. Or different times of different years.
I guess that question is to me. I'm, I'm looking for a commitment from the board, if, if this is something you want to move forward with and, and, because at this point, I don't want to get into a construction package that we come out with and then the board says, well, we don't want to do anything with that. And, you know, we, we struggle. Now, if the board doesn't want to commit funding to this project, that may be. And then we just have to go and try funding somewhere else at this point in time. But we're, we're, we're requesting a commitment of funds and, at this point, and so that's what, that's the request we have.
Okay, thanks, Kyle.
Guy.
I just, a question. Are we worried about moving forward that, you know? Do we have a choice, you know, at some point where we move forward, we can delay this for a year if, if those emergency funds are delayed or, you know, for some reason, we can't. Those aren't available as soon as we thought they would be. There, we could delay this. I mean, there's no, you haven't signed a contract that this needs to be built this summer, right? So.
No. It, it would definitely be a two-step process. I mean, we, we would definitely want to finish the design and then we would come back to the board once we do the H M S review to say, here's what we're looking at for costs. And, and, and this is the, that's probably the point where we put down the rubber and say, here's how much funding we need at, at that time. So if you want to delay it till then, you could. But I was trying to show that we, that the, the service area is stepping forward with a commitment to put the funds forward to get us to majority of, of funding for it so that we can get over the top and go to the feds or go to the state and say, hey, we need the remaining funding. The service area, the Anchorage area-wide have gotten us, you know, eighty-five percent of the funding and we need the rest of the funding to get us over the top. Now, if we can go out and find funding somewhere else that gets us full funding, we'll, we will jump on that and then it'll leave Gerwood with a flush account. But we're, we're trying to show a, a level of commitment here.
Yep.
Okay. So we still have, we still do not have clarity on funding for the bridge replacement on Ruin. So although there's a proposal, you know, the municipality has proposed it as one of their eight projects to this state, we're a long way from getting any funding from that. You know, there are other potential sources of funding, but some of them come with, with the requirement to match at twenty percent or fifty percent. So we still have this sort of cost of, you know, if it's a fifty percent level, maybe up to half a million for a critical piece of infrastructure. And it makes me uncomfortable not knowing what path we're going there to sort of commit another half, half a million to a, or five hundred and fifty thousand to the hand tram replacement, although it's also an important part of recreational infrastructure. I think if we, definitely if we're in a situation where we had the same amount of money and we either had to do the road, you know, make sure we had a, a robust roads to the, to the water plant and the industrial park or hand tram replacement. I think that's a, to me, it's an easy call, but it's probably a harder call to some people. But I think, you know, we would, it would be uncomfortable if we'd committed that to one or to the hand tram and were not able to follow through with the, with the bridge replacement with a bridge replacement around road. So I'm a little uncomfortable still with this. I haven't quite decided how to go. Any other comments from the board? And we probably have some mechanical questions as well. Kevin, I see Kevin guest in the chat.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. This is Kevin Desmond. I was going to ask either you or Kyle to comment on the choice matching funding, commits to matching funding. Does matching necessarily mean round out whatever is a missing portion? Does it mean fifty percent or is it kind of wide open? I, I share your concerns, Mike, on a commitment to an unspecified amount of funding. Maybe, Kyle, you can tell us what matching funding means to you. Thank you.
Well, in, for example, in grants, we see grants that are fifty percent, D D twenty, ninety, ten. So ten percent is from the grantee and then ninety will come from the feds or the state on that aspect. So we're not, we're not asking for specific. So we're not, we're not asking for a specific percentage of match. But we're just showing that there is a commitment of providing matching funding to the state or to whoever who might be funding stream as we as we go out and and seek it. So we already know that the administration has funded, has encumbered and guaranteed and moved to us 525,000. I'm seeking to show a commitment to putting funding towards this project. And then we try to go find the rest with with other funding sources out there.
Thank you, Kyle. This is Kevin Desmond again. Would, is your current wording to you preferable over something like Board of Supervisors commits to allocating funding to support the design, blah, blah, blah? Over.
Just drop matching.
Yeah, or some, I can see how you would like some sort of a commitment from from the community and from the board. My question is, if you were to say commits to allocating funding without specifying the amount or supporting funding of something to that effect?
Yeah, I'm open to that. If whatever makes them feel comfortable, I'm fine with that.
Brianna.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Mike and Kyle. I I realize this is moving forward would be great to support it, so I I would move that because I also for process, Mike was going to ask if there are no other comments, we could vote to, or sorry, not vote, but put the resolution forward and second it for further discussion. But I would edit it to remove matching and move that we put allocating funding instead of matching.
So from from a process point of view, why don't you move the move to adopt this resolution and then we can amend that?
Okay, I move to adopt the resolution before us regarding the replacement of the hand tram and construction of a suspension bridge to span Glacier Creek.
Could I have a second?
I'll second. This is Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer. Right, now we can discuss and potentially amend.
Thanks.
Did you have, Brianna, did you have some specific language you wanted to change?
For now, I would change the word matching to allocating, as Kevin suggested. And I'm open to other suggestions.
Okay, so we have a, we have amendment, but it has not been seconded, so if someone would like to second that.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. Well, we had a second and a third. Okay, thank you. Okay, did anyone want to discuss that change? I do have a comment about the about I would, I would feel more comfortable if there was a, at least a maximum amount either here or in some other form. Maybe that's something we do in first quarter budget revision and just leave this general. I think the language allocate does not does not commit us to a dollar amount, which I suppose is better than it why it gives us the flexibility to to come up with a specific number a little bit later in the process. But alternatively, we could actually put a maximum in this in this resolution as stands and then potentially add more later. I think I'm going to support the amendment as it stands. Any more discussion on the amendment? Either from the board or from the community? Okay, it's called for a vote on the amendment, Kyle, can you do a, can you, I'll try and restate it. So we would have the last therefore become therefore the board of the Gurwood Board of Supervisors commits to allocating funding and supports the design, engineering, construction of the suspension bridge, et cetera. I believe that's correct language, so if you can do a roll call now, please, Kyle.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Joanna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
The amendment passes four zero.
Okay, so now we have slightly different language in our resolution without a without a dollar commitment. And we've taken away the word matching and replaced with allocation. Any further discussion on the amended resolution? I guess my question for you, Kyle, is, is this, does this support your needs or the needs of the the needs to get this project going if we don't have a dollar amount allocated? What have we verbally committed to? With other with other entities, with the meeting or anybody else?
We have said that the board is interested in funding this project, but the question will always be, how much? And I will, I don't know. But I will come back to the board, but they have basically given us the green light to move forward and get the full design package completed with the HMS costs and then full thing. So we will, we will definitely have steps forward. And that we will, I was my, probably my response will be that the board will like more information, which this process will help us get to.
Okay. And although it may not be relevant to the vote itself, there have been questions about the details of the design, whether we use tall masks or shorter masks, whether it's an arch up or a, or a, you know, concave design. How do they get, how do those design requests get resolved?
Oh, I will present them to the design team that will probably be a part of our discussion as we move into the next step. You know, they wanted feedback through this process, so we'll provide that to them and and look at it, you know. It was a good suggestion about looking at those Swiss made bridges that come preassembled. We will, we will definitely discuss that with them and probably explore that and and look at it from that aspect.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any more comments or discussion on the amended resolution, so I suggest we move to a vote. Kyle, can you do a roll call, please?
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Joanna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Now, that motion as amended passes four zero.
Thank you. Thanks again for all your work, everybody, on this. We'll now move over on to item 10, Gurwood Trails Committee Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for KMTA Grants Application for Matching Funds for interpretive display projects related to the hand tram. So this is another part of the KMTA grant application due February 2022. So this is another part of this project that a distinct against seeking out other funding sources. Is Margaret or Kyle, who are you, who is talking?
I can speak to it, Margaret.
Okay, thank you.
So we are, there's another grant cycle coming up from KMTA. And we think this would be a great opportunity to partner with them and submit a grant application to help with the building of that interpretive display out there at the hand tram. And either way, I think it's good to memorialize the history of that. It's, you know, as we've shown that the hand tram is probably not coming back, it is not coming back into action. And at this point in time, we would like to submit a grant application and start working forward on that. And we're looking for GBOS's resolution of support for that grant application that we will submit here in February.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, so what specifically are we going to be asking for? If you could just summarize what's in the resolution.
It basically the resolution here, I'm just sorry, I'm reading over it.
Margaret, here.
Go ahead, Margaret.
This part, the resolution just talks to our relationship with KMTA and how they've supported us in the past. And their concern is not necessarily the funding amount or what specifically we're going to do with the the grant in this resolution. Kyle and I have been kicking around some different ideas. KMTA grants are valid for up to two years. So we want to choose a project that we can realistically achieve in two years regardless of the project or with the progress of the bridge project itself. So we might be looking at something like building pads and more of the conceptual work having to do with this memorative interpretive display. But to be honest, we are still in the the visioning stage, I think, of this to figure out exactly what we would be doing and what the value of that would be. The beauty of working with KMTA is because their grants come around annually, we can take some smaller portion of the project and complete that. And as long as we've done that well and show them our progress, then we can apply for another grant next year into the future to eventually get us where we're trying to go. So really, we just wanted to begin turning this project over and showing that we're making real progress on on working on this. KMTA is very interested in projects that involve the community. They would love to see a lot of community support.
Okay. Brianna?
I do not have a question. I was going to move in support for the grant application for KMTA funds.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it. This guy.
Thank you, Guy. Any discussion on the, again, thank you, Margaret, for the explanation, any discussion on the resolution? Or the project, or the project itself? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so let's move on to a vote.
Okay, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Joanna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Thanks again for all the work on this. So now we're on item number 11, the structure of new and old business, meeting requirements and discuss what's needed for petitioners to receive one meeting review. So I'm not sure if anyone's done any deep work on this. I've looked, I've looked a little bit in general at what sort of items we have and compared it to how other similar boards and organizations organize their work and looked a little bit about what we did historically, as far as I can tell. But I haven't got a specific proposal. I'm not sure if anyone else has got a specific proposal.
Mike, from staff, we would ask you table this. We are working through some ideas that are coming out of subcommittees and we like to work it through with them in their old business and then bring it to the Board of Supervisors. And basically, sort of idea that came out of LUC was to come up with maybe a list of questions or qualifications that could move something from old to new business on that aspect. So we like to work that out and then bring it to the board to discuss further. So we have something to actually work off of, so.
I think that makes sense to have something specific rather than discuss things just conceptually. I think we do have, there are several things, several ways in which we can improve the efficiency of these meetings. I mean, here we are at 10:23 and we haven't finished old business yet. We have another four items to go, plus the reports. So there are definitely things we could do to improve our process and to make it less burdensome for for us as board members, for staff, for members of the public, for petitioners. It may be worth looking at the slight, those slightly more general questions as well as just the one meeting review question. If you can consider those as well, and then I think we should, we should go ahead and come up with some more concrete ideas next month.
Okay, we'll do that.
Any any other discussion from board members or public? Guy?
Yeah, just, this kind of goes back to this question, but when we bring it up next month, will it fall under new business for more discussion? Or are we, are we going to try to make a vote on it, have a concrete, you know, proposal or something, vote on it then?
I, well, this will come back as, still come back as old business, so we can choose to do what we wish with it.
Okay, just depending on how far along we are with it, I would imagine.
Yep. I mean, one thing we could do in the future is actually be more formal and, you know, bring this back to discuss at a specific meeting rather than just leaving it on the agenda, which is kind of what we're doing now. So maybe that's something to consider and add to our list. We can do the meta discussions. Okay, any other, any other questions from the board or the community? Okay, so we'll bring this back and discuss next month. Item number eleven and a half, pre 12. So this is to the, this is to get a sort of discussion or update on where we are with Trails Plan. So just for context, we committed initially about 50,000, just under $50,000, like 48 and a half or something. And then another, I believe around 18,000, I don't remember the exact number. So it's, I don't know if you have those to hand, Kyle, but it's just under 70,000 so far to the Trails Plan. And I'm really unclear what's happening to it. I thought that the, I thought we would have, we've gone through a full process, full public process. The meeting is a draft plan, public comment, public comment, review, adoption or not of public comment. And then what I was expecting is either the plan to be, it to come out of Trails or some other statement that there are problems with it. And what's actually seems to have happened is there hasn't been any formal declaration of what it's doing. It's just going back through yet more, yet more revision. So I just wanted to get, since we're, since we're representing the taxpayers and we've paid, we've paid $70,000 towards this, I'd just like to get real clarity on where we are and what the expectation is next. So if Kyle or Carolyn, if somebody can talk to this and explain, explain where we are.
I can do it, Carolyn. Do you want to handle any of it? Carolyn, if you're there, your, your mic.
Yeah, why don't you take a run at it, Kyle, and then I'll add in.
Sure. So a little back history on this, just so we have a point where we're at. We started the Trails Plan through the Gurwood Trails Committee. And through that, a subcommittee was created to handle the development of the Trails Plan. And that subcommittee was selected out of Gurwood Trails. And through that process, we brought on a contractor, a huddle AK, which was led by Holly Spootoris. And she was hired to do it, and that was the $50,000 contract there. And so through a prime contract, which was, would take company, Holly was hired as a sub because the preference of the Trails Committee was to bring Holly in as she was handling the Gurwood area plan. So we went through the process with the subcommittee and we came up with a draft Trails Plan that went out for public comment, received public comment. But through the process of getting there, we had extra work and time that was needed by the subcommittee to get to that point. So extra work sessions were completed, extra meetings were completed, which was outside the original scope and pricing. And so additional funding was needed and we came to the GBOS asking for additional funding and and also asking for additional funding for perceived or estimated work sessions that we would have with the subcommittee to deal with the comments that were going to come from or the comment review that was going to come from staff, Holly and I, with changes for the plan. Plus, bringing Holly on to help us through the rest of the approval process that would take us to LUC, GBOS, HL, the Heritage Land Bank Commission, planning and zoning, and eventually the assembly. And so in total, and I'm shooting from the hip here, but I think in total, that proposal was going to be maybe like 22,000 or something like that. I don't have it in front of me. Through the request to GBOS, it was determined that the additional funding needed to work with the subcommittee and keeping Holly available to work and and lead that she had done with the subcommittee before was not approved. What was approved was to pay for the extra work that she did outside of the original scope to complete and get to that draft plan that was submitted to public. And then committed was funding for her to take it through the approval process to to get the plan adopted by the Assembly. I think that is, was $9,000 to complete that. Once again, I don't have this in front of me, so I could be totally wrong. So the the funding that was approved was paid to Holly to make up for the extra work she did during the initial drafting stage. she did during the initial drafting stage. And since then, we have had Holly attend a few of the subcommittee meetings, or excuse me, a few of the Girdwood Trails meetings as we've gone through all the staff comments. Some of them, I decided I didn't need Holly there, and so it wasn't worth her time to bill us for that, so she didn't attend. But there was others where I felt like she needed to be there because there were more difficult subjects that we needed to tackle, and she had input there, so I wanted her to be there as well. So she has billed us for probably a total of TV, well, she hasn't billed us yet, but she, she will be billing us maybe for a total of four to five hours that has happened so far with her attending those meetings in that process. And, and that will be coming out of that approval fund to get through it. So we just mostly recently completed the staff edits, and that's work that we would have done with subcommittee and then brought the plan up to Girdwood Trails Committee for their consideration for approval. When we completed that staff edits, a motion was made, and Carolyn brought it forward to see if anybody wanted to make this motion, was to accept the plan as drafted and amended at that point in time after we completed the staff recommendations that we spent probably six to eight meetings going through to complete. That motion was brought forward, there was a second made, there was lengthy discussion about that, and through that discussion, that motion was withdrawn. And the direction that Girdwood Trails Committee took was to consider other, well, basically, there was no support to accept the document as amended. And so the Girdwood Trails Committee made a decision to go forward with people's, other Girdwood Trails Committee's ideas about they would like to make to the plan or changes to the plan, in the hopes that they could find a draft that would be accepted by the Girdwood Trails Committee that could be brought up to LUC for their consideration. So that's, at this point in time, that's where we stand. And that, and the beginning of that process will be tomorrow night at a special meeting where those changes that are coming from GTC members will be considered, will be introduced, and then a following meeting will be considered for action.
Yeah, thanks, Kyle. I would just like to add that one other problem with being able to move forward with a vote on the plan like last meeting is we actually haven't, I think maybe Holly's working on it now. We haven't seen a revised draft with the changes that Trails Committee had worked through the last week.
And, and that's true. So we are finishing up the Red Line document. We were hoping to have it done by last Friday, but as I said earlier in the meeting, a bunch of issues last week between her schedule with her commitments and then with the storm that I had, I did not get a chance to finish my review of the edits that she had done. So I hope to have that done tomorrow, and I can, we can post that on the website.
Okay, thank you. So I have another question. So, or maybe it's a clarification. So there has been no vote to accept, there'd been no vote at all to accept the plan after it's gone through revisions, public comment or public comment revisions and acceptance of the revisions. And in fact, because the motion was kind of withdrawn, it's effectively the same as a failure. So we've got to the point now where the, we've produced the plan, we've paid for all the work up to this point, and GTC has not accepted the plan. Is it been, is it actually not accepted, or is it still up for, is it still up for a vote? Is it possible it can be accepted? Or has there been a commitment either de facto or formally to go through another set, no, go through another round of revision? That's what I'm trying to understand. Where actually are we?
I agree with you that there was not a vote completed. There was, the motion was withdrawn, it was not put to, the vote wasn't called, so we don't know exactly where the board stands on this, or excuse me, where the committee stands on it. But in the sense, the motion failed, I guess the motion got pulled, and nobody presented a second motion for reconsideration. So at this point, the next step that we had prepared in order to get to a vote, which could have consideration, is to find out what changes need to happen to, to get that vote, or at least, you know, yes, get that vote.
So the way we should read it then is that the, that effectively the Trails Committee has not accepted that document, and it needs to be revised?
Yes.
Is that the right summary, Carolyn, as well?
That's the way it seemed to stand at the last meeting. I think the biggest question was that from the beginning of the, as we started to review the, the staffs or the, you know, the, when the staff had compiled all the community input, and then we were going to review all the, that input, a lot of people said, well, a lot of our ideas weren't in here. When do we get to present new ideas? And so they, and we decided we needed to wait till we had reviewed and voted on all the, the staff interpretations and input from all the community. So there was a feeling that everybody had been waiting to still be able to add something, and they hadn't had a chance yet, so.
So you mean a not?
Had stalled out.
I don't quite understand that. So you mean, there was public, during public comment, people made comments? And then are you saying that because those public comments didn't make it into the staff recommendations, they feel they weren't heard? Or were there more public comments following the public comment period, if you like, or a second round of public comments? I just don't know how to interpret this.
My impression was it was a mixture of both. Some people felt their public comments hadn't been included during, in the draft of the plan created, and others, I think other ideas came to them. I'm not exactly sure, but people, and they wanted to make some more additions to the plan.
Okay, thank you. So there are several hands. I'm going to start with Jennifer as board member first.
Thank you. With the chair, I am, I think I am a little confused because I feel like I heard some different things. One was this idea that there is no support for it to go through as amended, and another that it wasn't voted on partly because we don't have a kind of a final document. And those, those are two different concerns. So also, if the motion was made and seconded, I don't quite understand the process of it not ending, not being voted on. So it sounds, it sounds to me like I'm hearing maybe three different things going on. Am I, am I not understanding something?
I could address the last one there, and I'll have to remind you on the first two. But the first, the last one, the person who made the motion withdrew their motion. And yes, there hasn't been an up and down vote on the amended document, as we did not have that completed that night. We still haven't completed it yet.
Okay, so I'm sorry, but isn't that, that's actually a different issue than whether or not we now add more things to a document that, am I understanding correctly, currently costs about $70,000 and multiple, just thousands of hours of work as well? Is that correct?
Okay, yes. Okay, sorry, were you going to say something, Carolyn? I saw your.
No, I'm just gonna hear the other comments.
Okay, thank you. I saw your hand go up briefly, Brianna, but then went down again. So, all right, okay, Brianna, and then Julie, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle, for that. And I, all I was going to add for this discussion would be that as this board tries to grasp what's going on and what just happened and what might happen next, or tomorrow night's meeting and the following meeting, is that a direct message to all the people at the meeting from the chair and from staff on what is an exit strategy or what happens next, so that there isn't a whole round of confusion and it's stated from whoever's chairing or staffing in charge of the next steps, so that they're clear. That's all.
Thank you. Julie, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks. A couple of things I wanted to say. First, I think the confusion boat has long sailed, but I don't think the summary of what has happened most recently is really accurate. I don't think it's accurate to say there's no support for the plan as it sits after the set of recommendations that GTC just voted on. At that last meeting, I don't know, Kyle or Carolyn can verify, but we were multiple hours into the meeting when the motion to vote on the plan was made, and then there was a lengthy and highly confusing discussion about Robert's rules and procedure, and it was extremely hard to follow. So I, I just don't think it's accurate to say that there was, that there is no support for the plan as it sits today. And it's, I also don't think it's accurate to kind of pose the process that we're moving into now with this new set of recommendations as just like, ugh, just something we had to do because like we couldn't get an up or down vote. That's, staff and officers created this process, told people that this process would exist, that being another, another opportunity outside of the original scope, outside of what the public was originally promised for a process, to be able to go back and put new things in. So that people knew all along that if they didn't get what they wanted through the series of votes we did on, on the recommendations, that they were going to have another chance to try again, because that's what the staff and officers kind of invented as we moved along. So I, I just want to make sure everybody really understands what happened. It isn't just like, oh, shoot, now we have to come up with something new because people don't like it. Additionally, the plan can fail. That's always been an option from the beginning, that it would never make it out of Trails Committee. So I don't think we can keep creating new ways to try and get the plan passed until certain parties are satisfied. That's, that's not a good public process, and it doesn't serve the whole community. And I am really concerned about where this process is going and how far it's diverged from what we were promised to begin with. So thanks for the chance to share.
Thank you, Julie. Did anyone respond to that, or Kyle, or staff, or Carolyn? If not, we'll move on to Shannon.
Hi, so I wasn't prepared for this because I wasn't sure what the topic was going to be for tonight for Trails. But Jonathan, my husband, was the one who made the motion to vote, and I was the one who seconded. So he's not available to speak, so I can't say that what I'm going to say is 100% accurate, but I was sitting next to him. There was a long discussion after the motion about the reasons why it wasn't appropriate to vote, one being Robert's rules. Was it the time to cut off the conversation or not? Robert's rules always confuses me, so I couldn't really see what that conversation was exactly. And that the community was told that they would have one more chance to give feedback, which that was, I do recall that is true, so that part is true. But it was never, it was never clear. Yeah, there was just some unclarity. But by the way, thank you, Kyle, and everyone for working on it, so I don't want to take away from that. But Jonathan revoked because, you know, he was kind of being told that it wasn't the time to vote. You know, everybody was coming back and saying, we can't because of Robert's rule, we can't because more people are supposed to have input. There was never a, we can vote, and then we can also give input, or we can amend after that. It was, we can't vote because we told the community that we had to take input. So, and then, I mean, I've already stated this to some people, but I would agree with what Julie said. You know, I was under the impression as a voter that the community feedback that was put into the plan that we spent months and months and months voting on was the vote, and that what we were voting on would stand, and that the comments that would follow would amend in a sense that it would be put into the parameters that were already voted on. And now it seems that the votes actually aren't the vote. So I don't know what to do with all that. But anyway, end of my, what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Barbara?
Thank you. I've done a lot of research today, and so I've gone through all the minutes of the subcommittee that originally met, as well as minutes from the Girdwood Trails Committee. And the last time the subcommittee met was in June of this year, and at that point, it was discussed as to what was going to happen with the public comments, and it was unsure as to where they were going, whether they would be reviewed by the subcommittee after Kyle and Holly had looked at it or not. So what I feel that shows me is that there really never was a process laid out to begin with. So when people say we're not getting the process we were promised, I don't know that we were ever given a process. I couldn't find anywhere a process. I've seen a schedule, I've seen a scope of work, but I've never seen a process laid out. So then I went to the Girdwood Trails Committee minutes, and by October, the plan had been reverted, kicked back to the Trails Committee to vote on because we didn't have the money for subcommittee meetings anymore. And I'll just read from you, read from the minutes to you. After Kyle gave a presentation of all the staff recommendations, as in his and Holly's recommendations based on public comment, from the minutes, it says, "These recommendations are proposed by Holly and Kyle. However, GTC members should review the plan and recommendations, come up with their own recommendations to discuss at future GTC meetings." Then I'll read to you from the November meeting. It said, "Structure for review of draft Trails master plan. It is expected that GTC will decide that amendments to the draft plan will be considered. Chair recommendations that the, recommends that the amendments proposed through public comment review will be addressed first in the order they're provided in the meeting compilat, in the order they are provided in the memo compilation in the meeting packet. Additional recommendations are to be sent to Margaret." And then in December, it says, "The January 2022 meeting will be an opportunity to vote on the plan as updated, or for the public to present additional recommended changes for GTC consideration at a future meeting." So there's three times in the minutes when it's told that people will be able to offer other ideas, to say that we've gone through all the public comments. I don't think is necessarily fair. I think that Holly and Kyle did a phenomenal job of going through 2,000 public comments and pulling some really good changes based on that. And if you look at the fact that out of the 40 recommendations they made, 36 of those recommendations have passed almost unanimously. So I think there is a lot of support for this plan. But if you read through the public comments and you listen to the discussion in the meeting, the natural space topic is still creating a lot of work for the Trails Committee to work through. And so the opportunity was open to people to not just solely consider what Holly and Kyle had proposed, but to give other ideas. And for the remaining of those meetings we had from November, twice a month, until two weeks ago, we were only allowed to discuss exactly what the recommendations were that Holly and Kyle had put forward and could not deviate in any way from what they were proposing, which I think was great because we definitely got a lot of work done. But that's why it was opened up to people to give some more ideas. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Barbara. Kaylee?
I'm, I would like to be back in line, but I see that Carolyn's got her hand raised, and I would prefer to let her comment first, but I'd definitely get back in line.
Okay, thanks. I'll remember that. Okay, thanks, I'll remember that. Carolyn?
All right, thanks, Kaylee. Thank you so much, Barb, for going back through the minutes and, you know, clarifying the way I kind of remembered it happening. I just, I want to say that, you know, when the trail, when the whole plan was dropped back in Trails Committee's lap, I was looking for direction. I didn't know exactly what the process should be. I didn't know that, you know, it came back to us sooner than I expected. And then I was just looking for the proper process to go forward. And I, I did think voting on all the, or, you know, reviewing and voting on all the staff recommendations was the way to go. We decided we, we would probably still be doing that if with each one, people could bring in other ideas. And I don't know, we were going through it as best we could. I did feel strongly that it should come to a vote when we were done with that because it felt like a chapter was done. But I didn't like say there had to be a vote. I asked for community opinion on that. And like I said, there was a motion, but then it was withdrawn. And so that's kind of where we got to where we are now. Thanks.
That's Carol. Julie again, and Kaylee, then Jen.
Sorry, did you say Julie?
Yes, yes, please go ahead, Julie.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to remind everyone there's a scope of work. So regardless of what is in minutes, the scope is kind of the deciding factor here, I think. Or I think it, I think it should be. And I know a lot of people like numbers, so I just wanted to throw out a few, which is that there have been over 24 subcommittee and GTC meetings dedicated to the Trails Plan, all of which had opportunity for written and oral public comment. There were two open houses, which were focused on collecting public comment. And there were also the over 2,000 public comments that were received, as people have noted a couple of times. And I, I mean, I'm all for public comment at any point in a, you know, legitimate process. But I think where we're going after January 4th is not really a legitimate process anymore. My suggestion, which I submitted to the process that I don't even think should be happening for GTC tomorrow, is that we should just have an up or down vote on the plan as it exists after January 4th. And even suggest that these, you know, additional ideas that have been submitted in writing be included as an appendix to the plan that we vote on. So that people's voices are documented and heard again. But it's clear that they did not go through the same process as everything we've done for the past two years. You know, which was a very intentional process. The scope was laid out to be able to make sure that everyone in the community who uses Girdwood's Valley for Recreation, that their voices were heard and represented. That was, that was very intentional. It was specifically not meant to be a majority rules, I can get more people than you to a meeting on a particular night kind of situation. So yeah, just wanted to remind everyone of that. And I think we should be taking a vote on the plan as it exists after January 4th, which we don't have in front of us to actually see as a coherent document yet.
Thank you, Julie. Kaylee?
Actually, thank you, Julie. You, you made a couple of the points that I was going to make, which is that there have been numerous opportunities for all of us along the way to make comment as both public and as the committee of GTC. And also the additional subcommittee of the master planning committee had meetings of their own. And they were obviously the active participants of that. But as a public, we were allowed, you know, time as well to make public comment, should we so wish. That said, I am all about getting everyone's ideas included into the plan. And that's why, you know, I'm, I haven't been a heavy proponent of one issue or another. But I do think that balance is key. And if we're making a master plan, I want it to be something that truly encompasses the five or 10 years that we're looking at. And I'm concerned at this process. Some of it is echoed in some of the, some of the problems echoed in just in the testimony we've heard here, which is, you know, there both was a process. So that's why additional comments should be allowed. But at the same time, there was no process. And that's why, you know, no one should have expected that we'd vote up and down on the trail and then on the draft plan that's existed and then, or should have existed. And then move forward with whatever we wanted to amend. So I guess, you know, I think the process was confusing and I think everyone can admit that. And there was no, you know, intent for that to be so, it just is. But you know, there wasn't a tension set forth, as Julie mentioned, or as Julie testified, that there's, you know, that we had with this trail plan, which was to balance it and serve the needs of the community. And I think that it's just, the confusion has taken us away from that as our stated purpose. So I don't know. So I kind of agree with Julie, I think, and I did. I advocated to Carolyn that we should vote up or down the trail. I mean, that was my preference. It felt like anything that we add after that will become part of public comment. So yes, everyone's ideas should get some attention at that point. But it, it's not limited to just the Trails Committee, right? I mean, it has to go back and allow the rest of the community to look at the new draft plan. So I feel that we should vote up and down on it and then move forward with whatever we want to do next. Thanks.
Thank you, Kaylee. Jen, you're next in the queue, but obviously I want to point out that we have three minutes left in this meeting. We have a hard, we can't continue beyond 11 according to our rules. So I'm going to propose that we either adjourn and have a special meeting probably next Monday, or we continue this meeting next Monday. I think the better path is to adjourn and have a special meeting. But I'm open to anyone who wishes to make a motion. We would probably continue with this item and then move on to new business. Does any board member have a, want to propose a motion?
Mike, I'm not sure I'm clear on the options. We can adjourn.
Yeah, there's the differences. We either, we either basically keep the meeting open. So any actions we've taken tonight don't really have any impact until we finish the meeting. And we continue the meeting next week or at some other date. Or we just stop the meeting now and we have another special meeting to cover the material we didn't cover tonight, we didn't finish tonight. And I would suggest next Monday might be a good time because we have a meeting within uni in the afternoon. So we can have another meeting immediately after that or slightly later in the evening to continue, to continue or as a special meeting.
Okay, I am, I am open to, I don't know, either one. I don't even know if I have a preference, but I'm open to a special meeting on Monday. If that's good. I did want to just throw out there, I'm not entirely sure why we're talking about this. I don't know if Trails, does Trails need us to adjudicate for them? Do they need help? Do they need to be mediated? I mean, I don't, I don't understand why this is a GBOS issue.
I would just say it's a GBOS issue because we're paying for the work and we've committed, we've invested in it. So I just want to understand where it was. And it's clear it's more complicated than I thought it was.
Yeah, I think maybe we could give them another meeting or two. And then, yeah, let's be done talking about this tonight if we can. How about that?
So I heard a, let's, I think what I heard in there is a proposal to adjourn tonight and have a special meeting next Monday at, let's say, 6:00 PM.
Let's say that.
Can we second it and vote on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so mechanically, we have a meeting at 6:00 PM next Monday on the 24th to continue the material from we didn't touch tonight. Thank you. And I think Kaylee and Shannon will be first in the queue when we get to the next meeting next week. Hopefully have more clarity after tomorrow's special.
My hand isn't up.
That's what I was going to ask. So do we have, we have the meeting tomorrow then and we just keep going? And then we come back and discuss what we did? I'm unclear, sorry.
I, I'm not clear if we'll have anything to discuss on this topic next week. It may be that it's already been resolved by the Trails Committee. I wanted to understand where we were and, and I've heard that from many other people as well. And I think we're, it's clear there are problems. I think, you know, we, I'm not, we may have to intervene, we may not do. I don't know, we haven't got to that point in the discussion. But we have tomorrow to, the Trails Committee have tomorrow to get further along the process and hopefully clear up the issues.